Good evening colleagues, Happy New Year. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to this first meeting of 2020 Newcastle City Council. Tonight, again, we'll be using the mobile voting system. And again, we'll start with a test vote to ensure everyone's fully registered and set up to participate in, should a vote be required later in the meeting, as I have a sneaking suspicion it will be. So, we've got full IT coverage this evening, but that won't always be the case. So please make sure you're familiar with this system. So can I ask you if you now access your device and submit a response to the test vote? And hands up please if you do need any help. Okay, no hands up, so we'll carry on. Oh, there is one, sorry, thank you pardon. Late comers, please ensure that you're logged into the mobile voting system. You've missed the test vote. Right, we appear to be finished then. Okay, so do we have any apologies?
Thank you Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Ainsley, Ivey, Beecham, Threw, Gallagher, Hall, Hobson, Hunter, King, Lower, Karen Robinson, Hostelthwaite, Schofield and Hazel Stevenson.
Councillors Allison, who was the other one? Maureen. Okay, does council agree the minutes of the meeting held on 6th of November last year? Yes? Yes, agreed. councillor Higgins? Yes please.
Is the microphone on? Is that, yeah? On page seven of the minutes, where we were talking about the pay policy statement, I raised a concern that certain comments made by members of the party opposite in relation to the salaries of senior members of staff were actually disrespectful for the contribution those staff to make to the council. However, it's recorded in the minutes as saying disappointment was expressed at the disrespectful comments in the media regarding senior staff, which is not what I said. I said it was comments by members of the party opposite in the media that I felt were disrespectful to members of our staff.
Is it agreed that is corrected in the minutes? Agreed, fine. Any other comments on the minutes? So are they now agreed as a correct record? Right, thank you. So item three, if I may, on behalf of the council, I'd like to congratulate all those with a connection to Newcastle who were recognised in the New Year's honours list, and particularly the following: former councillor Gina Tiller, who's been awarded the MBE; Matthew Otubu, a former Newcastle youth councillor and youth parliament representative, who was awarded a BEM, and that's a fantastic accolade for one of our young people's representatives and who helped us to relaunch the youth council; and finally Angela Foster, the council's former service manager of community hubs, libraries and parks, who's also been awarded the BEM. Congratulations to those three. And I've been asked to draw members' attention to some information circulated this afternoon about the role of councillors and the general data protection regulations. Please have a look at that email and contact the data protection team if you have any questions. And note that further training is offered, will be offered, in the coming months. And finally, as tonight's city council meeting will determine the council tax base, I would like to remind members that the guillotine will fall at 9pm rather than 8.30. Item four, correspondence. Does council agree to receive the correspondence from the DHSS? Agreed? Yeah. There are no petitions received this month, so we move on to the one request to address council which has been received for this evening. And I will now invite Tamar Pittman to address council.
Good evening Lord Mayor and councillors. In December, I asked a question of councillor Kemp pertaining to the potential to prohibit pavement parking on certain streets in the city, where it's a nuisance to local residents. Councillor Kemp explained that there's a Department of Transport-led national review happening at the moment, which is looking into pavement parking. And for that reason, it would be prudent to wait for the results of the review before Newcastle City Council will consider taking action. Now, one of the reasons I raised the question of preventing pavement parking in the city was because of its impact on traffic speeds, as restrictions would be self-enforcing if the available road space was reduced. Research has shown that road safety improves when vehicles travel more slowly. If a pedestrian is hit by a vehicle at 20mph, they're twice as likely to survive than if they're hit by a vehicle travelling at 30mph. Lower traffic speeds see a reduction in air pollution particulates and NOx emissions. Now, as the police lack the resources to enforce 20mph zones, other means are necessary. Physical traffic management measures, structures, hard engineering can help, but they're generally not favoured by local residents, and of course, there are cost implications. Reducing road widths is another approach, and vehicles parked on roads instead of pavements can help, as would engineering and removing white centre lines. Now, encouraging people to move to more sustainable modes of transport would lower the number of vehicles on our roads, and many of the problems that our city faces would be reduced. Greenhouse gas emissions would drop, air quality would improve, and people would become fitter as they walk and cycle more. Making private motor vehicle ownership less attractive alongside improvements to our public transport and cycle infrastructure could aid Newcastle's transition to being a cleaner, greener city. I note that last autumn, the city council consulted on their proposal to introduce some 20mph zones outside a handful of schools in the city. One of these locations is Netherby Drive in Fenham. This is a busy road where many motorists break the speed limit. I've personally measured vehicle speeds along there and found that one in five motorists exceed the speed limit, despite there being prominent road signs stating that there is a school safety zone there. Netherby Drive joins with Tubal Lonan, another road where residents regularly complain about traffic speeds. And at the junction of these two roads, a teenage cyclist was hit recently in December. It's unfortunate that the Streets for People proposals, which had included the creation of an east-west cycle route along there, have been scaled back. The last update was from one year ago, where residents were advised that a funding bid was being worked on. It would be helpful to know what stage the Fenham Streets for People proposals are at, as well as the new 20mph zones. And while it's not known for definite whether or not a 20mph zone or a safe cycle route would have prevented that recent accident, there is at least a reasonable chance that they could have. Now, given that road safety, speeding traffic and air pollution are all very real concerns amongst local residents, and Newcastle City Council are committed to improving air quality and reducing greenhouse gas emissions under its climate emergency pledge, a sensible approach would be to expand the number of 20mph zones in the city. Ideally, all residential streets would have the speed limits reduced. And at the very least, all streets within a half-mile vicinity of a school should be 20mph zones. Our air would be cleaner, the number and severity of vehicle-related accidents would be reduced with improved road safety conditions, and more people would be willing to switch from driving to cycling and walking. I'd like to ask what the city council's position on this proposal would be. Thank you.
I understand councillor Forbes will respond.
Good evening Lord Mayor. Can I wish you and all members here a very Happy New Year? And can I thank Tamar for raising some very important issues in the address to council this evening? While some are quite specific in geography, they do raise some wider city-wide points of principle, which I'll try and address too. And we're likely to return to many of these themes in the discussion later on in the agenda on air quality. On pavement parking, first of all, it was actually the common select committee, not the Department for Transport, that considered the issue of pavement parking. And it reported in September 2019. The recommendations from the Transport Select Committee included calls for government to legislate to ban pavement parking across England, acknowledging the very real struggles that many local authorities face, and also the importance of running awareness campaigns on the impact of parking on pavements. I know from speaking to representative bodies such as Newcastle Disability Forum and RNIB, as well as friends who are young mums with buggies, just how awkward cars parked on pavements can be for pedestrians, particularly those with visual impairments or disabilities. So, we can't act yet, but there is a recommendation from the Transport Select Committee for the government to legislate, and we'll continue to press for that action so that we can get on with the job. Narrowing roads would, I think, be quite expensive and in some cases counterproductive to the free flow of traffic, and to buses in particular. I can think of a number of pinch points around the city where cars parked on both sides of the roads severely impairs bus passage. And we have to make a judgement between balancing speed of traffic and emissions, because an important consideration in air quality is that congested roads with stop-start traffic actually produces greater levels of pollution than free-flowing traffic on the whole. But we do support these measures, and we urge the government to respond and to implement the recommendations from the Transport Select Committee. On the Streets for People issue, in relation to that, there is a proposal for an east-west cycle route that goes through the Fenham area. The latest public drop-in was held in July 2019, and a question-and-answer document about the proposed scheme was published and is available on the Streets for People website. Work is underway to finalise the plans, and communications will continue with residents. I have to say, there's been no scaling back of the Streets for People proposals. But what we did make clear at the very start of the process was that we're likely to get more applications than there was resources available to fund in the first instance. And therefore, with budgetary constraints, it's essential to prioritise routes in line with our overall vision for the city's transport network. Netherby Drive, which Tamar referred to, was never part of the Streets for People proposals, but in the local cycling and walking infrastructure plan, developed and consulted on in 2019, we envisage Netherby Drive to be part of that longer cycle route across the city. And this plan was submitted to the Department for Transport in November. As yet, we haven't heard from them. I think they've been busy with other things, like a general election. We haven't heard from them about funding for completion, but that's one of the things that we will be picking up in the next few weeks. And I can also confirm that we're seeking to implement a 20mph zone limit on Netherby Drive in the near future, which you've highlighted. And on the broader point around 20mph limits, I agree that reducing vehicle speeds in residential areas is important, not only for the safety of residents, but it encourages more active modes of transport. Newcastle was one of the first authorities in the country to introduce 20mph speed limits for residential streets. And 69% of our total highways are subject to these limits. That said, there is definitely more that we can do, especially outside a number of schools. And we'll continue to engage with schools and students and residents around reducing speed limits on these roads. It might not always be practicable to have a blanket 20mph limit around all schools, because schools are on different types of roads. Many are on main thoroughfares. But we will seriously consider this, and also look at the prospect of variable speed limits to reduce speeds at certain times of the day to increase safety for our children. So I hope, Tamar, that gives you a clear answer to the questions that you raise, as well as the broader points of principle that I think we're trying to achieve together. Thank you.
Mr Pittman, you now have a minute to respond.
Thank you councillor Forbes. I'm pleased to hear that you'll consider this further. The idea of variable speed limits is a good one. It's used on other main roads in the city, for example, outside Jesmond Park Academy. A lot of buses travel along there. I'd like to see that approach taken everywhere. It's not practical to put a 20mph zone in on smaller streets. I am a little bemused as to why on the smaller roads this couldn't be implemented further. I don't really see that there's a need to necessarily consult if they're quiet roads. There are plenty around primary schools in the city where the roads are much quieter, and I don't think a 20mph zone would affect anyone considerably. With regard to, you mentioned about Netherby Drive, and it was never part of the proposal to include that in the east-west cycle route. That is true, it was Tubal Lonan. But there has been no update on that since last January. I did check the Streets for People website before writing the question. While some of the proposals have been furthered, the funding in particular for this one, there has been no update at all. And it would be really good to find out exactly what's happening with that, because the west end of the city does lack the cycle infrastructure that other parts of the city have got. And given that we don't have a metro system there, it's really, really important to try and discourage car use and encourage people to walking and cycling as much as possible. So if it's possible to find out what's happening with that, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for that then. We'll move on to item seven, which is the council tax base and business rates base. And I'll call on councillor McCarthy to move the report, which I understand will be seconded by councillor Dunn.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And can I echo the leaders' comments? Happy New Year to everyone, and look forward to working together positively over the next year, Lord Mayor. This is the technical report that is before us this evening in preparation for the budget, which of course, we will bring to city council in March. Lord Mayor, as usual, the purpose of this report is to agree the council tax base for 2020 to 2021 for the city as a whole, and it includes the details around the parish council areas. And colleagues across the council will know we've got to agree this before the end of this month. Lord Mayor, this report recommends that council agrees a council tax base for the city as a whole of 67,429 band D equivalents, which is an increase, I think, really good news. An increase of 668 band D equivalents, 1% on the previous year. That's good news, because it means we're providing additional housing for people in the city. It's based on the long-term collection rate, Lord Mayor, of 98%, which I think is a fantastic collection rate, given the difficulties that some residents have in the city, and colleagues will be aware, and I'll come to that. Our council tax reduction scheme has been tweaked in order to support as many people as we possibly can through the means that we have at our disposal. And so, Lord Mayor, the council tax base is in line with that that we're consulting on in the budget report, which is currently out for consultation. And just to highlight in particular, Lord Mayor, in 2.1, we set out quite clearly the council tax bases for the parish council areas, so for Hazelrig, Bronzick, North Goffsteth, Dennington, Woolsington and Blakelawn North Fenham, are set out quite clearly in the report. And details of the calculations are in appendix C. So if colleagues want to look at that in some detail, the information is there in front of us. Lord Mayor, the council tax base reflects changes that we've consulted on through November and December on our council tax reduction scheme for people who are working age and on welfare benefits of some description. The main changes are set out in section four of the report, but there are some simple things that we've done which make the scheme easier to understand. For instance, renaming the income bands from ABC and D to 1, 2, 3 and 4 seems like a really simple thing to do, but actually, it was very confusing when you've got band A and you've got, you know, an income band A. It was obviously very confusing for people trying to interpret our scheme. So a simple change, but will help people understand what it is we're trying to do. We have increased the value of the income bands through this process, and the detail of that is clearly in paragraph 4.4, in line with September's RPI. And again, that's in paragraph 4.5. We've increased slightly the non-dependent charge to reflect income levels and just to give us a little bit of capacity in our system. And we've simplified the calculation of self-employed people phased in over the four years. And that's very clearly set out in the report in paragraphs 4.7 to 4.9. Lord Mayor, items 1 to 4 in that list, out of the six, are cost neutral. They just alter the scheme ever so slightly. Items 5 and 6 will give us a very small saving, but actually, that isn't coming to the council. That will go into the hardship fund, which obviously, we use to support people who are really struggling. Lord Mayor, we did consult, as I've said, we consulted on that during November and December. The outcomes of that consultation are set out in appendix B. We've included in the papers before us tonight an updated integrated impact assessment in appendix D, so that we are being open and transparent about all that we're doing. And the full council tax reduction scheme is set out in detail in appendix E, which reflects all of the changes that are before us. Lord Mayor, the government ensure that we can't change the council tax reduction scheme for people of pension age. So that is as the government set out really through their regulations. In terms of business rates, Lord Mayor, because that's obviously part of this work that we've done, we will confirm that through the submission of our response by the end of this month deadline. And that will take into account any new releases that are announced by government, for which the council will then be subsequently compensated. We were involved, as colleagues will know, this year in the business rates pilot, and that was a 75% income, but the government have pulled back on that. That won't be available to us next year. So from next year, we'll revert back to the 50% local retention, which is what the picture is nationally. And of course, 1% of that was for fire and rescue, and the other 49% comes to the council next year. Lord Mayor, I hope it's straightforward, although it is very detailed. I hope it's straightforward, but I'm very happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Dunn?
Formally second the report and the recommendations, and reserve the right to speak. Second the report?
Yes, I've got that, yeah. Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. My understanding is that I might actually have 20 minutes to speak on this, which is a tremendous amount of time, buckle in. But whilst I would love to take a considerable amount of time going through the intricacies of this report, it's fair to say that it's a technical document, the vast majority of it. I believe there's little to discuss or argue about. Indeed, there are things later on in the agenda this evening that are far more interesting for us to discuss. There is, however, one small element of this report that I would like to raise, and I'm slightly concerned that it is almost smuggled in in a dense and technical document, so as to almost fly under the radar. This evening, we are being asked to agree to an annual uprating of the council tax relief income bands in line with the retail prices index, and to remove this from further consultation and scrutiny in future years. It strikes me that a measure of inflation, and in fairness, the higher of the two that are commonly used at that, is not a measure of wage and benefit increases. We would have to acknowledge that inflation has typically risen faster than wages in recent years. This move risks pushing more of our least well-off residents into lower discount bands over time. Now indeed, it is actually the party opposite that frequently decries the use of the retail prices index as a cost increase measure in national matters. And I am surprised, therefore, that it appears in this paper as something that should be used in the future without further consultation. Perhaps indeed, it is the measure that takes house prices into account, but it fundamentally does not reflect real changes in wages and benefits, which it strikes me should be the primary consideration whenever it comes to changes in the income bands that we use for council tax relief for our least well-off. I see absolutely no reason why this long-term commitment, which stands ultimately to penalise those least well-off, must be made this evening. And I would therefore request that the cabinet member takes it off the paper, does not move forward with it, and thinks again on how we should be looking at income bands this year and in future years. Thank you.
Councillor Dunn?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's always a but with councillor Ferguson. You know, we agree with this but. And the but about the tax relief income bands, whilst I hear what is being said, the whole point about this report and the way it's brought to this meeting every year is to try and make it simpler and to enable easy decision-making. And having a simplified formula to use in the future does make it much easier and more understandable for households and others, particularly in parish councils, who need this information presented to them at this early stage. And to have a formula that we can use, which is a recognised formula, simple formula, used for lots of other things. So that's why it's included in paragraph 4.6. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Ashby?
This report is entitled Council Tax and Business Rates, but there's scant information about business rates, except reference to, which councillors refer to, the submission that's been made to the DCLG by the end of the month. There's no background paper analogous to the five on council tax. As we know, we're increasingly dependent on our kickback on business rates from central government. So can the cabinet member assure us that we will be better briefed on this before the budget is discussed? There's a report back at length on the very thin, unfortunately, very thin public response to the consultation exercise, but there's no mention I've been able to find of any consultation with the business community. A revolution once took place fired by the slogan 'No taxation without representation'. And while it's unlikely that the business community will be storming the Rinktons Tea Factory any time soon, it has the right to feel aggrieved that it's being neglected. So further, can the cabinet member give us any assurance that the businesses will be specifically consulted on the budget process, and in particular, on those services directly relevant to them and which they're helping to pay for? And will council members receive feedback of equal detail to those 69 local people whose opinion is reported back on in the report? Having said that, Lord Mayor, I would not like anyone to think that I support the business rate system. rate system. It's seriously flawed, out of date, in need of revision and greater clarity, or better yet abolition. My party has proposed that business rates should be abolished and replaced by a commercial landowner levy based on the value of the land only paid by owners rather than tenants. Commercial land should be taxed regardless of whether the buildings above it are occupied, so the tax would also apply to unused and derelict commercial land. The manufacturing and technology sectors would be the most significant beneficiaries of the commercial landowner levy, as well as boosting retailers. Overall, this would reduce property taxes in Newcastle by around 7%, while ensuring that land and property speculators in places like the western of London pay a bigger share. Perhaps such fairness and encouragement to the wealth creators might find some support beyond this side of the aisle.
Does anyone else wish to speak to or comment on this report? No. Okay, so I invite councillor McCarthy to reply.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the comments. And I'm pleased councillor Ferguson didn't take up the whole of his 20 minutes. Lord Mayor, the assumption from councillor Ferguson is penalising residents, and I think councillor Dunne has quite clearly said that isn't the case at all. The council tax reduction scheme is far more generous than many in this region, and I'm really proud as a local authority that we are doing our best to ensure that we protect those people who are least able to afford to pay their share of council tax in this city. So we have the possibility, the potential, to review it each year, and indeed we do. We might not bring something back necessarily to full council unless there has been some formal process gone through, but officers do monitor the way that the council tax reduction scheme is working regularly, and I definitely, for one, know exactly how effective it is and how much value it's given by the party opposite when they were in government forced people to pay towards council tax. Lord Mayor, councillor Ashby talks about scant information about business rates. This is, today's report is about the setting out our council tax base, and the business rate system is not a local system, it's a national system. So I did explain that we have had for one year the opportunity for a devolved system where we worked with our colleagues in North Tyneside and Northumberland on a 75% retention of business rates, which gave us a very small amount of income. Although, obviously, we're not at the end of that year yet, so we're not totally sure how that has performed. The government pulled back on that fairly recently, said that would not be on offer again, so we can't ask for that in future devolution deals, that's just not available to us. The government have changed their mind. He asks about whether the businesses are consulted on the budget. Yes, of course they are. That formal consultation happens now. That isn't about the business rates, that's about the budget, and obviously that's a separate process from the report that is before us today. And just to reassure him, the 69 people he's referring to are those who responded to the council tax reduction scheme consultation. They're not general comments that have come back from across the city, otherwise we'd have been very disappointed at that feedback. Lord Mayor, I think the report is self-explanatory. I hope I've responded to the comments that have been made, and I hope council will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. We'll now move to a name vote on the recommendations. Has anybody got any problems here? Put their hands up. Can you, Jenny, can you help us, please? I'm being advised that some people's devices may not have been updated. So if your vote is not shown on the screen, would you please come and let us know at the front here how you're voting, yes, no, or abstained, so it can be recorded? councillor Fairley, are you voting? Are you with us? There he is. You're with us, yeah. Okay, is there anyone whose vote isn't recorded? Okay, thank you, that is carried. So we now move on to reports from cabinet committees. The first one is about Breathe, the Clean Air Plans for Newcastle Gateshead and North Tyneside. councillor Woodock? Okay, we have that point of order made, understanding orders. Is it agreed that we move to committee? Do we need a name vote? Okay. Right. Right, it's just a vote. We will need to move to the system, though. So here we go for the third time. Right, it's clear that that proposal is not agreed, so I will call on councillor Forbes to move the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
To be seconded by councillor Avery.
As previously, I'm standing in for councillor Ainsley tonight. But this is a really important issue, and one where, not for the first time, this council has been given a hospital pass by government. We all know, in recent years, that the health impact of air quality has become more and more apparent, with several hundred attributable deaths a year to poor air quality. And the government lost a court case with Client Earth a few years ago that required legal compliance. But instead of thinking about a new national strategy, what the government did was simply pass the buck down the line to the councils in the areas where the air quality is worst, which are the major cities of England. And that's why, across all of the core cities, we've all been wrestling with this problem in recent years. Because the trouble with the government's approach is that it drives us towards a narrow set of responses to the challenge, rather than, as I think all of us would want, a much more comprehensive approach to an integrated public transport system which genuinely incentivises people not to buy cars or to leave their cars at home. And we also have to see this in the context of decades of transport policy. Because, again, this isn't something that's happened overnight. For decades, we've had a drive towards the motorcar as the main method of transport for people, from the closure of branch lines in the 60s and 70s to the successive freezing of fuel duty in budgets by successive chancellors. And that's why, Lord Mayor, I have to say, I do feel slightly aggrieved that we are having to take all of the flak for dealing with this problem when government could do so much more to help. I'll get on to a little of that later on. I think it's really important that we have positive alternatives to private motor vehicles, and that we encourage people to take up sustainable modes of transport. In fact, that's something that we've been doing as a council. We've been investing in the bus loop around the city centre, and of course, we are all aware of the significant delays caused by the traffic appeals tribunal to establishing the bus gate on John Dobson Street, which is holding up those plans. Two and a half years we've been waiting for a decision. But also the 16 million cycle investment fund, infrastructure fund, to put in place strategic cycle networks across the city for the first time. And our plans, published plans for transport and for development, clearly prioritise, in order, walking, cycling, public transport, and then private vehicles. And these proposals that we're considering tonight have been widely consulted on, not once, but twice, with a very wide range of consultees. And of course, it's really unfortunate, therefore, that the government's thinking on this hasn't been more joined up. One example of this is councils around the country being given a framework to operate on which penalises public transport first and private vehicles last. And then, to make it even stranger, government's formal advice to people who couldn't afford to upgrade their older private diesel vehicle is that they should buy an older petrol vehicle instead, which we all know is worse for carbon emissions. And I found it very difficult, Lord Mayor, to engage with ministers on this issue. The general response from government has been, oh, this is a technical issue that you've just got to get on and sort out with the experts. And the one conversation I have had with the transport minister around this, I was told it was above her pay grade to sort this out. I don't think that's an acceptable approach to a public health crisis which has been caused by decades of national transport policy. We've been working with other councils and the London mayor with a body called UK100, and we've been actively involved in trying to change the national debate around this to make sure that government takes the points that we all collectively raising seriously. And this report sets out what we will have to do in Newcastle to come into compliance. I have to say, these proposals are not put forward lightly. The charging zone itself will have an impact, and part of the document in front of us tonight for consideration talks about the mitigation that we want to get from government, or the funding for mitigation that we want to get from government, in order to address the issues that we know will affect people and businesses. We've been told that time and time again in the consultation. We also would like funding to restore the Tyne Bridge to its much-needed full glory and its original colouring by at least, by the very latest, its centenary in 2029. But there's no doubt, we're going to have to make some difficult decisions about priority routes for transport, both in the city and between the city and neighbouring authorities, including Tyne Bridge crossings. Some of the business case proposals that we're considering tonight are for funding to specifically change road junctions. Other aspects of funding are to do things like make changes to, or help businesses and individuals who might be affected with freight consolidation or for ultra-low emission vehicle taxis. I have to say, before members start to get very excited about the individual proposals in here, that what we are putting forward is a business case to government which is entirely dependent on them funding this set of proposals. And of course, the detailed proposals which are set out in broad terms will themselves be also subject to further consultation as they're developed. But there's no doubt, Lord Mayor, we can't go on as we are. We have to have a new approach to tackling air quality. We're only just starting to understand the full impact of it on the health of people, particularly in deprived areas, and particularly on our children. For a long time, Newcastle was designed around the motor vehicle, the private motor vehicle. The city centre was redesigned in the 60s specifically to enable car usage. What we're having to do here is unpick decades of transport policy, not just in the city, but nationally. And what this business case does is start to make the case that we are going to take in terms of actions. What I hope, Lord Mayor, is that we'll also be backed by government in terms of policy changes and funding in order to allow us to do the job properly.
councillor Avery?
Second and reserve the right to speak, Lord Mayor.
councillor Stone? Followed by councillor Higgins?
Lord Mayor, we are happy to acknowledge on this side of the chamber, we do have a clean air crisis in this city, and we regret that it's taken so long for the council to come forward with proposals. It has not been atop of the council's administration's priorities in recent years, and this submission to government is much later than it should have been. The council needs to find an effective strategy to address the air quality crisis. The question to our mind is whether the proposals we are being asked to agree to today are likely to be legally compliant in improving air quality and how deliverable they are. At the end of a lengthy process during which the council's initial proposals have received less than fulsome public support, it has arrived at a scheme which is sharply different from their original proposals. In seeking to avoid a charge on car users, it proposes a category C charging scheme which targets buses and other goods vehicles. In seeking to concentrate on the city centre and central motorway, it has no clear plan for the Gosworth High Streets and Great North Road corridor or the Coast Road corridor, both of which have identified air quality problems and which the government have singled out as being areas that need to be tackled. As an award councillor representing residents of the Coast Road, I share their concerns that the council scheme does nothing whatsoever to address their poor air quality. It appears to be designed to address the New Bridge Street-Tyne Bridge bottleneck by making congestion and emissions back up further along the central motorway and creating a bigger bottleneck at the Osborne Road access and back along the Jasmine Road corridor. It also appears highly likely to create new areas of congestion around New Bridge Street, Shield Field and Battlefield. It is not so much addressing air quality problems as moving them nearer to residential areas. The work appears to be based on the hope the council can secure £40 million to cover the cost of the central motorway and Tyne Bridge schemes, and if this funding is not forthcoming, and councillor Forbes did not sound confident on that front, it is not clear to me that the overall objectives of the scheme can be achieved. So even if the scheme proceeds in full, it's not clear to me that ensures the air quality targets achieved in the timeframe required. My assessment of the situation is sceptical as to whether the council's compliance is realistic. I understand there has been considerable back and forth between the council and government over the methodology that has been employed to assess this, and it remains to be seen whether the government will agree with the council on this. It remains to be seen whether this will be challenged by additional review, as has been hinted at by national organisations such as the Client Earth Campaign Group. It will be interesting to see if this is tested and what the impact of that will be for the city council. Now, there are some aspects of the proposals which the opposition can support. There are nods towards some of our previous suggestions, including school clean air zones and freight consolidation pilots, even though these are on the modest side. But this is not in our view likely to be enough to deliver a compliant scheme and significantly cleaner air. We regret the council has not taken the opportunity to pursue opportunities such as introducing low emission bus corridors on key routes like the Coast Road and the Great North Road routes, low emission park and ride schemes like York has introduced, or workplace parking levy option funding significant improvement in sustainable public transport, as is the case in Nottingham. All in all, the council has taken a long time, had significant delays, and made significant changes in its approach to submit a sub scheme to government. The opposition's suspicion is the council has ducked an opportunity to show real leadership on air quality, and is submitting a weak and confused proposal at the last minute which even they are not particularly convinced about. Now, if the government find the scheme to be non-compliant, they may well require Newcastle to enforce a category D charging solution anyway. I hope the council administration isn't deliberately putting forward a last-minute lesser option in the hope that they can blame the government if and when a tougher scheme is imposed on them, because that is where I think we're going to end up in this situation. And it's all very well talking about more devolution of more powers and more transport policies, funding to cities, but it seems to me the leader of council is running away from the significant responsibility when it's being devolved directly to him on this issue of air quality. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
councillor Higgins, to be followed by councillor Woodock?
I was just trying to decipher the question in the last contribution, Lord Mayor, but anyway, perhaps it's a useful precursor to the rather brief contribution that I intend to make. Can I thank councillor Forbes for presenting councillor Ainsley? Can I thank councillor Forbes for presenting councillor Ainsley's very helpful report after what has been an extremely challenging consultation over improving air quality in the city? However, throughout this whole process, does he share my disappointment at the negative contribution of the party opposite, who rather than offer realistic and constructive suggestions, have simply criticised our endeavours to improve air quality for the health and benefit of everyone living in our city? Furthermore, as we are, as we have now reached the stage where we were required to lobby, to lobby vigorously for considerable government funding to implement our proposals, does councillor Forbes also share my hope that we can rely on the party opposite to be more constructive and offer a greater level of cooperation for our efforts in the future? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Woodock, to be followed by councillor Holland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Mine will be a shorter speech on what we all agree is a big subject for our city. My recollection is these are actually the third proposals to come forward. I think the first ones were some pre-proposals that were discussed some two-plus years ago. These proposals today are the most minimal, from my recollection, of the three geographically. It attempts to solve pollution in Gosforth Ward by a knock-on effect, by actually sorting out the city centre. I think by any stretch, by any imagination, that is going to be a difficult proposal to come out well. I find it difficult to believe it'll be totally successful, and I think many others around this chamber would as well. It's very, very disappointing, the proposals for Gosforth and for the north of the city, as councillor Stone did point out. This doesn't stand very strong scrutiny, I would suggest. I hope it does work, because the prize, lower pollution right across this city, is something surely we would all wish to have, regardless of the legal background, the legal rod that is upon our backs.
councillor Holland, followed by councillor Kane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To be honest, I'm quite shocked at the cynicism from the opposition, and councillor Stone's suggestion that our submission is half-hearted is, in my view, quite outrageous. I personally am very pleased to say that Newcastle and the other local authorities involved are looking at this issue far more holistically and more creatively than what was the legal direction from government. I think it's been an extremely hard task, and I do think that there has been a lot of effort and a lot of thinking outside the box to pull something together really well. However, I do agree, though, that there seems to be very limited resources nationally, and even more limited national action to actually see this air quality issue pushed through. And I understand the pressures that are falling on the local authorities, so to find half of the room kind of, well, part of the room being so cynical is, well, frankly, unhelpful. So I'd like to look at how the local authority is looking at implementing this legal direction, and what are the sort of strains and pressures on us as a local authority, along with our partners? Thank you.
councillor Kane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Forbes quoted the transport hierarchy at us, and there's incredible cognitive dissonance in this in the city, because we hear about this hierarchy all the time, and yet highway scheme after highway scheme completely ignores it. There seems to be an assumption in this plan and others that you can only put in cycling and walking schemes with cycling and walking money, but it's nonsense. Every highway scheme should be a cycling and walking scheme. And if we look at the recent schemes that were consulted on in the north-west of the city, all of them were designed to maximise vehicle flow and corral cyclists and pedestrians out of the way, no matter how long that route would take. I would also like to point out that the Labour Party, for years, has put leaflets out across the city at election time criticizing the Lib Dems for our investment in St Mary's Place Bus Lane, which was a key pinch point for public transport in the city that we opened up. And yet, that side of the chamber stood on election leaflets criticizing that investment. The Barris Bridge scheme was another one, where we have a four-lane highway, and yet we can invest millions of pounds in it and somehow not promote walking and cycling, even though, again, it is a key pinch point in the city. More parochial, and I have raised this before, and councillor Stone referred to it, I really do not understand the proposals for New Bridge Street and the motorway. We have two, one A road and a motorway coming together, and yet what you're effectively trying to do with these proposals to close the junction is to push traffic down B roads and residential roads, and as, as we have said before, you're bringing pollution to the people. You're moving it into residential areas. Maybe that will hit a government target, but it will cause serious health impacts to some very deprived communities. And nobody has produced any evidence to me that this is not the case. So I, you know, councillor Holland was talking about the scepticism on this side. It is very valid scepticism, because these proposals are half-baked. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Avery.
So the, the main thing that occurs to me here is that there was a great deal of criticism from the party opposite, but what, what was really lacking were a couple, were answers to a couple of key questions. So firstly, do they support a CAS de-charging zone? Because they suggested many times that it might be inevitable, they criticised us for not proposing one, but they came fundamentally short of saying whether or not they support one. And the reason that they don't, and we all know that, that the elephant in the room is that we know that the CAS de-charging zone was not popular, and there are reasons why it wasn't popular. It will have, as we all acknowledge in this chamber, would have had a really significant impact on people without the ability to pay, without the ability to change their vehicles. We've said a great deal of times on this side of the house that that's why we need a national scrappage scheme, so that people who were encouraged to buy diesel cars by previous governments and who now cannot afford to replace their cars would have the ability to do so. So it's all very well and good for the party opposite to criticise us for not introducing a CAS de scheme, but do they support a CAS de scheme? Do they want to introduce one? Because they've hinted at it, they've suggested at it, but they have not said they're going to, and we all know why they haven't done that. And secondly, they then criticised us for a geographically limited scheme, but again, they have not said whether they would have supported a much larger footprint, or a footprint even bigger than the one originally proposed. Because unfortunately, there is, there's no getting around the fact that any scheme you propose will move traffic to the outside of the scheme, that in order, without having a CAS, you might have to have no CAS zone, or a CAS zone of the entirety of Newcastle upon Tyne, to avoid displacing traffic to somewhere else in Newcastle. So if they would like to propose a CAS scheme up Gosforth High Street, I'm sure our members on this side of the house would be absolutely happy to hear that proposal, but I have not heard that and continue not to hear that from the members opposite. So I think they need to be clearer about whether or what they support and what they do not support, and stop trying to sort of straddle the fence on this issue. In terms of more substantive problems, I think councillor Higgins really hit this on the head, that it's deeply unhelpful to say, we think it's unrealistic that you're going to get this money from the government, but also we won't help you lobby for it. I would have thought, particularly since the party opposite have, in fact, accepted and supported some of the proposals, like, for example, a pilot on freight consolidation, that they could at least get with us on the aspects of lobbying for the money required to do the sorts of conciliatory and remediation efforts that are not controversial, and that we would have a much better chance of getting this money from the government if we had a cross-party unanimity lobbying to say, we really need this £40 million in remediation supporting measures, because those things are not controversial. And I entirely accept that this does not go as far as we all might like in reducing the problems associated with air quality, but it is incredibly important to recognise, as councillor Forbes said at the beginning, there is a trade-off, there are really significant trade-offs, that it is not helpful to make people unemployed, to wreck people's economic wellbeing, in order to thus help someone else for air quality, which is why we have avoided a CAS de, and particularly because the modelling shows that the impact of a CAS de is not going to be significant above that of a CAS c, whereas the economic impact of a CAS de is really significant, and we saw that in voluminous detail in the public responses. And I think it's entirely reasonable and proper that we on this side of the house listened to the things that people told us in the response and changed our proposals as a result. And I find it very odd that the party opposite seem to recognise, seem to view listening and changing your mind as somehow negative. I commend this report to council. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Can I call on councillor Forbes to reply?
Lord Mayor, I'll openly say that this has been one of the most difficult and challenging issues that I've come across in my time in politics. There's no way forward in dealing with the problem that doesn't offend or anger one group or another. And one of the things that we have to do as a council is balance sometimes competing interests to try to achieve the best outcome possible in circumstances. One of the things that I know we've been very concerned about, as we've discussed these proposals and as we've seen them develop, is the inequalities that the narrow approach forced upon us by government could create if they're taken in isolation. There's a danger of moving traffic from roads designed to take heavy amounts of traffic into residential areas. There's a danger that we might get new buses in Newcastle which are less polluting, but the older, dirtier vehicles are moved to other parts of the region, and we simply export the pollution that they create. The CAS model only applies to older vehicles, and so if it was extended to private cars, somebody with an older car, a low-income family, would pay if they drove through the scheme, but somebody with a brand-new Porsche would not pay. That doesn't feel to me to be a fair approach, but it's the model, is the preferred approach by government to bring us into compliance. On the modelling, the original government model was based on an assumption of a steady increase over time of the number of, the proportion of diesel vehicles on our roads. And we challenged that, and we got agreement that the government would allow us to model things differently, because actually, the number of diesel vehicles being sold is falling in proportion. So our model, I can confirm this, our model shows that these measures that are being put forward, assuming that they're funded by government, will bring us into compliance. Government have confirmed that. But I would much rather we achieved compliance through a carrot approach to improving our public transport network than a stick approach of telling people where they can't go at particular times of the day. And of course, there are all sorts of issues around key workers and people on low incomes and people in particular sectors that will need to be considered further down the line if we have to extend the scheme to private motor vehicles. That's not ruled out at this stage, but it's not part of these proposals. But I think, Lord Mayor, what we need is a greater vision in mind for how we want people to move around our city. I said earlier that much of Newcastle's city centre was redesigned in the 60s around cars. And when the A1 Western Bypass was built, and the old A1 that used to go through the middle of the city centre up Northumberland Street was pedestrianised, Fenwick's threatened to move out of the city because they feared the loss of passing traffic. Nowadays, if anybody seriously suggested bringing traffic through Northumberland Street again, I think most of the businesses would threaten to move out. The point I'm making is that changes in transport are always vehemently opposed. And the lesson from the first consultation was that people broadly recognised that something needed to be done, as long as it didn't affect them. That's why we have to take people with us on this journey. That's why I think this business case sets out the best possible route forward in the circumstances available, with the resources that we've been told that may be available to us. We would all rather that we started from a different place and that we ended in a different place, but this is the reality of what we have to do to bring us into legal compliance by 2021, and this business case will achieve that, and I hope council will support it tonight. Thank you.
Does council agree the recommendations of the report? No. So we go to a vote again? Is everybody happy that their vote's recorded? Okay, those recommendations are agreed. If we move on to item nine, which is cabinet member updates, and can I ask members, when they ask questions of cabinet members on these reports, they keep them as succinct as possible and not include an extensive preamble? And the first one is on, is now in A, Education and Skills, I'll call on councillor Dunn to introduce the report.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. It starts on page 235 of the agenda, which seems quite a long way down, but, I mean, what this report does, it's my first cabinet report as a portfolio member for Education and Skills. It reflects 11 months of activity, Lord Mayor, and the previous report was from councillor Casey, who I'd like to publicly thank. And those of you who can do a little bit of sums will realise that that means that the last report was in February 19. I just want to start with a few thanks, Lord Mayor, really. I want to say thank you to Ewan Way, who left the council. Some of us have had the opportunity to give thanks to Ewan for his many years of dedicated service to the council, but I do want to take this opportunity as well tonight of welcoming the new acting director of Children's Skills, Judith Hay, who is at the back of the room there. And I also want to thank, obviously, all the staff who work in the directorate, but with also a sad note, because I want to particularly recognise the work of Andrea Semple, one of our dedicated staff in the children's safeguarding team, who tragically died at the young age of 27 from a chronic illness. And I had the honour to show my respect with her friends, family and colleagues at her funeral recently. The, the, basically, I think, you know, if I want to highlight one thing that's changed since the draft report went to overview and scrutiny, it is that Newcastle has now been recognised and awarded fostering-friendly employer status, which helps us as an employer to support our employees to become foster carers. And I think that's another great achievement and shows how we think about what we're trying to do as a council. I think I would like to say, and I hope it's correct, that the draft report, when it went to overview and scrutiny on the 28th of November, that it was positively received and councillors, and I want to thank councillors for their attention and for the questions that were asked at that meeting. And there were a number of questions asked, which hopefully are now reflected in the redrafted report. And I also took the opportunity in the redrafted report, Lord Mayor, to indicate that there were a number of other reports that concern children, education and skills, that are presented throughout the year, and to draw members' attention to those reports. presented throughout the year and to draw members' attention to those reports as well. What I would like to say is that, obviously, I'm happy to answer questions on my report this evening, Lord Mayor, but also to say that I will try and give as complete answers as I'm able to, but that if there are any other questions that members have that they're unable to ask tonight, I would be happy to receive them and make sure that we do give responses. With that, Lord Mayor, I'll take questions.
Councillor Cot, followed by councillor Lambert.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much for your report, and I would reiterate the thanks that you gave to staff in the Directorate to do a marvellous job in this particular service area. Just a few questions from me. One of the key issues in your report is about school funding and one or two good news stories around that. But we do know, of course, that the government is looking at flatter funding, which may in fact disadvantage Newcastle. I'd be interested in your views on that, particularly the impact that could have on the work around SEND and high needs. Second point is on school places. I'm pleased to see that school places are being delivered, but we do have a very ambitious target to achieve by 2030 of about 3,000 additional school places. So I'm just continuously interested in how we are achieving against that target. Another point is about the Clinical Commissioning Group's Single Point of Access for young people with mental health issues. She may be aware, the cabinet member may be aware, I'm on a task and finish group, the LGA, looking at some of these issues. I'm very pleased to see this in the report, and I'm just looking for reassurance that this will ensure that young people get the services they need and they don't come across the institutional barriers which sometimes surface in this particular area.
Councillor Lambert, to be followed by councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Is there a button I need to press here?
No.
Right, okay, thanks. Thanks, Veronica, for a fairly detailed and comprehensive report. My question is, obviously, the City Council, to its credit, brought in bursaries for disadvantaged young people across the city to enable them to participate in their education and training between the ages of 16 to 19. My question is, two parts basically, is A, what is the take-up of these bursaries? What particular wards benefit? And would it be possible to have, obviously, you're not going to be able to provide that now, but in the future, in the next week or so, a ward-by-ward breakdown of take-up of bursaries across the city? Thank you.
Councillor Ferguson, to be followed by councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The process of academyisation has removed many of the levers of direct control that the local authority has over schools in the area. And whilst there may be a range of views on the pros and cons of academyisation, I think we have to accept that it is the present and ongoing reality for how our schools operate. Can councillor Dunn confirm how she is working with the regional schools commissioner to secure the best outcomes for our young people in schools?
Councillor Ellis, to be followed by councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Dunn for this report. I was very pleased to see in the report that you were in full support of the call for an expansion of mental health support and funding and that this includes school-based pilots. I do understand there's issues with funding, however, at least 10% of school-aged children experience mental health problems. If untreated, these can spiral, leading to severe and enduring issues, self-harm misuse, substance misuse, criminality and suicide. Our young people are facing unprecedented pressures in life, and it's during childhood that interventions can be most effective. So my question is about school-based counselling, which makes it easier for troubled youngsters to seek help. It reduces stigma, increases awareness, it can often pinpoint further issues that can then be addressed, and in fact it can be a boon to the whole school, improving attendance and achievement and reducing disruption. Investing in our children's mental health now would bring immediate benefits, and in the longer term, we could expect to see broader savings, such as in adult mental health and substance abuse services, criminal justice system and improved physical health. Giving children a real chance to grow as happy, productive members of our society is invaluable. So I'd like to know what's been done to support the expansion of counselling within the local schools.
And councillor Ashby, followed by councillor Barnes.
Lord Mayor, it gives me particular pleasure to be able to congratulate Newcastle City Learning on its achievements with post-16 skills. Its awards for accountancy technician training is important to it, but such high standards are even more important to those working towards the qualification. And it's great to see that we're in the top half for achievement performance, with the icing on that particular cake being the extremely high level of sustained employment achieved by learners as a consequence. Vocational training leading to good jobs in the city and regional economy are vital to our economic future. Can I ask what consultation is undertaken with the business community to ascertain that NCL is understanding and responding to their needs? The report doesn't mention numbers supported and the change in recent years. I appreciate councillor Dunn may not have the figures to hand, but would be grateful if all members of the council could be emailed with them afterwards. And perhaps she can give us some indication of how provision might be expanded yet further.
Thank you, councillor Barnes, followed by councillor Higgins.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Dunn. My question's already really been covered by councillor Cot. It's basically just about SEND funding. I understand that the government has recently pledged an additional £700 million in funding for SEND provision across the country, but I also understand that according to teaching unions, this pledge falls far below what's actually needed by about £1 billion nationally. So basically, like councillor Cot, I'd just kind of like to know how much money the government, how much, sorry, how much money we're likely to receive from the government and also what work has been done with local schools to try and address shortcomings in SEND. Thank you.
Councillor Higgins.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I thank councillor Dunn for her extremely detailed and helpful report and also echo her comments about Ewan Weir, who contributed tremendously towards the authority? Yesterday, I attended a joint meeting of the Youth Justice Team Partnership Board with the frontline staff from the team itself, which highlighted the very important work that they carry out. In determining our priorities, early intervention was seen as crucial with troubled young people and their families. I am therefore encouraged by the new model of intensive early support, as indicated in councillor Dunn's report, as part of our transformative journey, oh, sorry, our transformation journey. Can councillor Dunn therefore give a reassurance that this will remain a priority in allocating our resources in the years ahead? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, I'll call on councillor Dunn to reply.
I will do my best, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cot really asked a number of questions, some of which were also asked by councillor Ellis and councillor Barnes, so I will try and deal with them all together, if you don't mind. I think the issue of school funding is one that we haven't got a definitive answer on. We just don't know what it's going to be and what the new distribution is going to be in terms of school funding. What we do know is we don't have enough and that schools are struggling and that there are increasing numbers of the education team who are being lost to the teaching service and less qualified staff being used. It's a great shame, but we're in that situation and we have to do our best. And the unfortunate thing, and it partly picks up, and I'll come to councillor Ferguson's question about academyisation, as more and more schools become academies, it means we, as the education authority, are less able to offer services to schools. It becomes more and more difficult as they take their funding and take school premises and school property and, you know, they have total management of it and it causes huge problems. So the answer is, as soon as we know what the funding figures will be for each individual school and how it's been assessed and calculated, then that will be published. On school places, I just wanted to say that we do obviously plan for growth in school places, and there has been a significant growth, particularly in Newcastle's primary school-age population, over the last 10 years. But over the last period, since, you know, 2011, basically, the council has actually funded and delivered 33 different capital projects in more than 20 schools, which have actually delivered over 1,500 additional places. Now, I'm pleased to say that in, I actually think it's in my calendar for next week, I am meeting with the head and the chair of governors of the Gosforth Academy Trust to talk about issues relating to school place planning, particularly in the Gosforth and the Newcastle Great Park area. So I will be having that meeting very soon. And, you know, obviously, there's been approval for a new school to be built at Callerton, the Callerton Academy, and Simon Side Primary School will be rebuilt following a successful bid to Homes England for funding. So there's a lot of work being done about making sure that we, as a city, are available, are able to provide the correct number of school places going forward. I think the other point that councillor Cot raised, which, if I'm correct, was also a point that councillor Ellis raised, was around the CCGs and the Single Point of Access and mental health. And I think, one, I didn't know councillor Cot was on the LGA working group, but we are using the Single Point of Access process. Improving child mental health in the city is one of our top priorities, ours and the CCGs. And, you know, I mean, it's a national issue, and that point has been recognised by the children's commissioner and the Royal College of Psychiatrists. There is a growing demand for child mental health services and counselling services in schools. And what it's important for us to do as a council is to make sure that our response is both timely and effective and it's of a quality. It gives the right help to the young person at the right time. Using the Single Point of Access, we've worked with them on some innovative models, and we've got a mental health trailblazer in the Kenton area of the city, including the Kenton Academy, which gives young people help with stress, anxiety and bereavement, for example. But I think, you know, we just have to recognise that there's a lot more to do and that it does require investment. Now then, councillor Lambert asked about bursaries. Now, I think that's actually one of the great positives in this city, that the Newcastle Schools bursary scheme supports 16- to 18-year-olds to continue their studies. And we're one of the few councils in the country that does that. And in the last 12 months, 370 young people have received that support. And this year, we've managed to broaden our eligibility criteria to include, one, both care levers, but also we increased the threshold for eligibility to £27,000 a year. Stephen's absolutely right. I can't give him a breakdown-by-ward of those 370 applicants, but as I said earlier, I would continue to do some work on this and will seek to provide him with the answer he requires. Councillor Ferguson, I've made already one comment about academyisation and the negative impact it has on our ability to support schools and support pupils, but I think the primary question was about what are we doing to improve outcomes? Well, that's not our, you know, that's up to the academy to do that. And, you know, the figures on educational attainment for the last set of examinations are not available yet. They haven't been analysed yet and they haven't been reported on yet. As soon as those figures are available, they will be published. And, you know, not only do we publish the Education Annual Report and the figures on attainments, but every quarter, when the council's quarterly performance report is published, it does include information about education attainment, Lord Mayor. I think I've dealt with councillor Ellis's question. I want to thank councillor Ashby for his comments about Newcastle City Learning and its achievements. I think the question about what consultation takes place with the business community, and yes, it does happen, through Newcastle City Futures, consultation is taking place with the business community about what the offer ought to be. And the question of expansion, I think, is one that's a little difficult to answer at this point in time, because obviously, education, adult, what I would call adult education funding, was devolved to the North of Tyne Combined Authority, and we've just recently submitted our bid to them for funding for the next period. We're waiting to hear from that, although there is an additional pot of money which we were also able to bid towards, and we've done that. And that ought to enable us to deliver more courses where there's sufficient demand for them. Now councillor Barnes asked about special educational needs funding, and it's like all education funding, that just isn't enough. But we do know from our own internal figures that the number of children and young people with special educational needs or disabilities in Newcastle schools continues to rise, you know, and that demand needs to be addressed. And those people are presenting with a greater complexity of needs. And again, you know, we're not unusual. It's basically following the national trend. I am pleased to say that at least for 2021 financial year, our money for high needs funding is going to increase by over £4 million, which is to be welcomed and will enable us to have a better and improved offer. And we do work in partnership with people in, for example, health and social care to support us with things like specialist staffing, training for teachers and support staff, specialised learning programmes and transport. What we're trying to do is to be an inclusive council, Lord Mayor, and I think what our fastest-growing areas of need are autism and social, emotional and mental health. They're the key areas that we will be focusing on and have focused on and have consulted on at least twice in the last year as to what our provision ought to be. So we are trying to be fully transparent about what our planning is, the direction of travel and the Newcastle local offer. And the Newcastle local offer website sets out how we plan on achieving that. Now then, I think the last question was on the youth justice service by councillor Higgins. This is a service that's in transformation, I think, as councillor Higgins recognised. And, you know, there have been some significant recent leadership change with the team manager, Gary Bell, taking over. I think what I would say is that although the numbers have slightly decreased in the last year within the youth justice service, we still have a significant number of young people who are committing what we are told by police priority statistics are the three most common offences in the city, which are common assault, motoring offences and fare evasion. And through working with the young people, because we've managed to get some Ministry of Justice Pathfinder funding to help us look at our serious crime in the city, we're, we're drawing together and learning and sharing our experience. And obviously, we will also continue to work with our colleague, the Police and Crime Commissioner, to invest in innovative services across the city, Lord Mayor. I just want to repeat again that I may have missed some things that people wanted to hear. And I'm more than happy to respond to any additional questions or new questions that anyone has, Lord Mayor. And I thank council for their attention.
Thank you for that, councillor Dunn. Does councillor agree to receive the report? Agreed, thank you. We can move on to the second one, which is on climate change in communities. I'll call on councillor Penny Evans to introduce the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce my first portfolio report for climate change and communities, as well as my first annual review as Chair of Safe Newcastle. But first of all, I'd like to thank scrutiny members because I've visited scrutiny twice in December and had a really good time. So I'm, thank you very much for all your questions. Basically, we want Newcastle to be a leading city, a clean, green city for the future and for generations to come. We want to protect our environment as that's what the people of Newcastle deserve. So Newcastle City Council declared a climate emergency in April last year and pledged to set up a climate convention to help us to achieve a roadmap to being a carbon neutral city by 2030, 10 years ahead of our previous target. We recognise the huge climate change challenge we face in the city and globally and how vital this is in order to save and protect our planet. Our climate convention includes a climate committee, a net zero task force and a citizens' assembly. The climate committee met for the first time in October and set out a plan for the year ahead. The net zero task force met in December and we are working with Mayor Driscoll and the Combined Authority to set up a North of the Tyne Citizens' Assembly. In December, at the Net Zero Task Force, we launched a Call for Evidence, a consultation open to all residents and experts seeking evidence on best practice, scientific and academic and technical advice on how to combat climate change. This is still open until the end of January. We recognise that the council does not have, does not have all the answers and the issue of climate change has to be one that we face together as a city. The findings from the Call for Evidence will be categorised and form the part of the next sessions of the Climate Committee. I think it's important, though, in terms of climate change, to stress that our response to the climate emergency cuts across all aspects of the council, especially the portfolios of councillor Kemp in terms of biodiversity and trees, councillor Ainsley in terms of air pollution, councillor Stevenson on public health and green spaces. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank councillor Forbes for his leadership, both locally and nationally, on the climate change agenda. I'm proud that Newcastle continues to be a welcoming city that celebrates diversity and the fantastic events like Pride and the Mello. But our communities also come together from across the city to mark special occasions and unique occasions and commemorate important days such as Holocaust Memorial Day and Remembrance Sunday. Some members have expressed concerns about the wording in the initial report, so I'm sorry that there was some confusion around that. We certainly commemorate Holocaust Memorial Day. We certainly don't celebrate such an awful tragic event. I want to thank our excellent community teams who work at the heart of our city to support ward councillors and services and volunteers to thrive. Our voluntary sector in Newcastle plays an important role in supporting communities, but we need to recognise the significant impact budget cuts and austerity has had on the voluntary and community sectors. And austerity, and many organisations are exploring alternative funding methods as resources have been impacted upon. I'd also like to celebrate the work of the Youth Democracy Group and their work towards becoming a UNICEF-friendly city. Collaborating with this group helps us recognise the challenges that young people face and they speak passionately and openly about their life in Newcastle. With a changing population, there's always potential for amplified community tensions. So the role of the Safe Newcastle Partnership has become increasingly important. I firmly believe that everybody in Newcastle, regardless of their gender, race, sexuality or religious beliefs, should feel safe and welcome. Newcastle is a safe city, but unfortunately, not everyone feels it is. We've seen an increase in the reports of hate crime, which hasn't been helped by this current government's anti-immigration rhetoric. We have a reduced, we've had a reduction in antisocial behaviour reports across the city, but some areas are still experiencing these issues. It's our priority that people feel safe and we hope that through better partnership work, intelligence sharing and community insights, we can prevent these issues before they happen, spot emerging behavioural concerns and take swift decisive action when the issues arise. We must continue to support the victims of these crimes and engage with communities that have been affected and reduce the impact of crime. I would like to thank Northumbria Police and the NHS organisations and all members of the Safe Newcastle Partnership for their continued work. I am pleased that we have developed closer working relationships between the Chairs of the Newcastle Adult Safeguarding Board, the Children's Safeguarding Board Partnership, the Youth Justice and Safe Newcastle to look to how we can work to do a joined-up approach to tackle criminal exploitation. I would like to highlight from the report some of the excellent sharing of good practice events that we've held in the city, including a public health approach to tackling exploitation and violent crime. Also to the very informative Coercive Control Conference. In the coming months, I look forward to working more closely with our Police and Crime Commissioner to tackle the root causes of violent crime. Finally, I hope that all members in this chamber will be supporting councillor Forbes' white ribbon motion as tackling violence against women and girls continues to be a priority of Safe Newcastle. Happy to take questions, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Penny Evans. Councillor Kane, followed by councillor Avery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very glad that councillor Penny Evans has been appointed to this post because since the change of administration in 2011, climate change in particular has been passed from pillar to post and it has completely drifted as a result. In 2016, the Cabinet agreed a Clean Energy Plan, which seems to have disappeared completely off the, and quite possibly because of this complete lack of leadership. At that cabinet meeting, we asked the question, who is responsible for this? Because it was in two cabinet members' portfolio lists. Councillor Forbes said he was going to take control, but the paper was presented by a fourth councillor on, on the Cabinet. So there's complete and utter confusion. And it's no surprise that this has drifted for so long. We are now nine months since declaring a climate emergency. And while I respect that councillor Penny Evans has been in post for a very short time, so this isn't a personal criticism of her performance but of the administration as a whole, this report shows that very, very little has happened since. It has been purely setting up committees, which are important for the future work, but we've only got the Clean Electricity Pledge in this report as a tangible step forward in nine months of, and I quote, an emergency. So I'd really like to ask the question, which, again, may be slightly unfair, is what tangible steps is the council going to take forward itself to prove leadership to all these partners we are bringing into these various conventions and committees to show that we are truly leading the way again on climate change like we did before 2011? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Avery, followed by councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll keep my question rather shorter. So firstly, I really welcome, as a Jewish person, the clarification you made about the language. While it might seem a very small thing to a lot of people, it is, it is a meaningful distinction to a lot of people within the community. My question is about Holocaust Memorial Day and the other sorts of excellent youth work that is cross-cutting across the areas of your portfolio, where young people work to address the root causes of extremism, hate crime, through excellent organisations such as the Holocaust Educational Trust. And there's a young gentleman that many of us in this room will know called Jamie from the west of the city, who's done fantastic work with that organisation. So I was wondering if you could just say a little bit more about youth-based approaches to dealing with these sorts of problems such as the events that run around Holocaust Memorial Day.
Councillor Ferguson, followed by councillor Shatwell.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Does it remain the case that the Climate Change Committee, the Net Zero Task Force and the Citizens' Assembly have no formal role in informing the outcome of the ongoing budget consultation process? Furthermore, does councillor Penny Evans agree with me that a newly declared climate emergency requires a list of new fully costed initiatives for the budget coming up, not just a pre-existing list of initiatives already in the medium-term plan? Thank you.
Councillor Shatwell, followed by councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks a lot for both the report and for your double visit to scrutiny in December. So in December, it was announced that Lord Carlisle has been stood down by the government as the independent reviewer of the Prevent Programme, following a legal challenge over his appointment. And it's very much hoped by human rights campaigners that the next reviewer is genuinely independent and so has the buy-in from those most impacted. So my question is, how do we as a council plan to work with our local communities so that they have a voice in the future independent review of Prevent? In particular, our Muslim communities, who may have felt demonised, targeted and spied on through the Prevent Programme.
Councillor Taylor, followed by councillor Ali.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased that councillor Penny Evans did spend quite a bit of her time talking about climate change, but I do share councillor Kane's concerns about the lack of action over the last nine months since we declared the climate change emergency. And as I said at scrutiny, having a report that has one page on climate change compared to seven pages on community information doesn't really reassure us. My question is, you've mentioned a number of targets or actions that the council is going to take over the next year. One of them talks about moving to 100% renewable energy, sorry, 100% renewable electricity. So can I ask you, does the council currently have an electricity contract with a green energy supplier? And if not, firstly, why not and when will that happen? And secondly, could you give some more detail about when these actions, such as setting up the Assembly, getting the zero-carbon plan in place and running the awareness and behaviour-changing campaign will actually start? Because this really is not looking like an emergency at the moment.
Councillor Ali.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Claire. Great report. In relation to tackling violence against women and girls, is there more detailed information available on the work that we are currently doing but will continue to do in this area, specifically on coercive control?
Okay, no one else. I'll ask councillor Penny Evans to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm just looking at councillor Kane's question. Thank you. Yes, I haven't had this responsibility for too long, so I won't take it personally. Also, in terms of tangible steps, yeah, I mean, the Net Zero Task Force has come, met once and has the leader of the council as the chair, but also is co-chaired with the Professor Hailey Fowler from the university. And it was really great to see that this, this group had representatives from all of the business communities, from the TUC, from very, from the NHS, from our hospital trusts, all of whom have really bought into this idea of looking towards and working towards being net zero by 2030. We all recognise that this is an absolutely massive task and it will involve some major changes in the way that we live and the way that we work, but everybody seems up for it. So in terms of tangible steps, I think one of the first things is how well that first meeting went and there'll be another meeting coming up. Councillor Avery asked about Holocaust Memorial Day. And this year, we've got lots of events happening across the city under the terminology as well about standing together. There are events from the city library to seven stories, to Biker Community Centre. So I really urge everybody to attend as many of these events as possible. Your support will be really welcomed. In terms of the youth work, we've had a project, so Projects for Change worked with a group of young people from, I think it was War Bottle School. The theme of Holocaust Memorial this year is the 75 Memorial Flames. And the group worked with the set of young people and it involved having an artist called Nicola come along. And they had a representative from the Council for North East Jewry, Marta Joseph, and she talked to the young people about her father's journey and his survival. And together, the young people and the artist have put that into an amazing production. And it's won, it's won national recognition as it's going to be part of the UK Commemorative Ceremony in, on Holocaust Memorial Day in London. So it's great. And if anybody has got the chance to see that, it's quite, it's quite a moving piece of artwork. So I think, you know, it's great that the young people have been involved in that. Councillor Ferguson, yes, in terms of the budget process. Well, what we are doing and what we have been doing is we have been setting out plans to set up the committee, to look at the Net Zero Task Force, which is going to be looking at the roadmap to how we get, we'll be looking at all the different projects that need to be put in place. You'll remember that we had a plan, a climate change plan, but that was aiming towards 20, I think I said it was 2040 or 2050. So we, we've got to look at what projects were in there. There were quite a lot of costed and how we can change those to fit the new timescales. But also what we're planning to do really is to look at what projects and ideas other people have, hence the Call for Evidence. We are not saying that Newcastle City Council has all the answers to this. This has got to be a whole-city approach. And so if there are things that come out of this across the city and ideas, then that's when we can fund them and pull them into the budgets. And in terms of the Citizens' Assembly, we hope that that will also pull up ideas that we'll look to be able to fund. And that's obviously with the timescales that happen within budgets. We'll all know that the consultation for this current budget went out in November, December. You know, it's out for consultation now. There is no way that that could have fed into that budget. In terms of councillor Shatwell, yes, I actually met with Lord Carlisle in December when he was doing a tour of the country, talking to people about Prevent and listening to people's views and feelings of Prevent. And I really hope that his replacement, whoever that be, will actually spend the time to come to Newcastle and listen to our communities. And that what we can do is, everybody here who's present has links into communities. We can tell people about how they get involved in the actual, because it is a government consultation, how they get involved in that consultation. But we can make sure that, that when they, if the government do come here, that we actually get groups together and actually get their views and feedbacks. get groups together and actually get their views and feedbacks. Because, you know, Prevent needs to be seen through the eyes that it's not, it's certainly one of the highlights of the case this week, there is much more of a far-right issue now with regards to Prevent. And we need to be telling people that that's one of the things that we need to be looking at, especially in Newcastle, in the North East. Right, where was I? Yes, Counselor Taylor, yeah, there is lots happening around energy, and I know Counselor Kane mentioned energy as well. And there's lots happening at the Helix site as well, and there's a launch next week of a local energy system. So I'll get some more information to you about that, and also I'll look into the question around the green energy supplier. And Counselor Ali, yes.
So thank you for your question, Counselor Ali. You know, it's really a priority for us to try and to work towards tackling violence against women and girls. We had an excellent conference last year with over 250 professionals who came to the North East, who came to Newcastle Civic Centre. I know Counselor Story was part of that, where we had some really incredibly moving stories about coercive control and what it is. And it became a law in 2015. And I really highly recommend that if people can get the chance, that they watch the Open Clasps Rattlesnake video, which is just an incredibly moving performance. It's a play, it tells the story of coercive control, but it really tells it in a way that makes it understandable. I work for a learning disability charity, and our Geordie Mums group today watched that video and were all incredibly moved, and it was really hitting home to a lot of people. So it is something that I encourage everybody to watch. I think that might be all of them.
Right, thank you, Counselor Penny Evans. Does counsel agree to receive the report? Agreed, thank you. Move on to appointments, item 10, there are a number before you on the circulated agenda. Are these agreed as set out? Yes, agreed, thank you. We'll move on to the first of a number of motions on the Tree Strategy, and I'll call on Counselor Huddart to move this motion, which I understand will be seconded by Counselor Folker.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, for the opportunity to expand on the proposals made in the motion. And we do welcome the City Council's Tree Strategy, it's a very useful document. But if we are to make best use of it, the city needs a rollout plan. In the run-up to the elections, we saw what became a bidding war with various political organisations, each stating they would plant more than the others. This is why I hope that the sentiments about the advantages of trees and how they enhance our lives are agreeable to all, and that without more trees, the lives of future generations will be seriously diminished. We are fortunate in this city to have several popular leafy suburbs, but we could do with a few more. So I'm hoping to articulate a vision that Newcastle in future can be known as a city of trees. Now, a few facts, there is strong evidence that planting more trees will contribute to the reduction of CO2, and that although trees can sequesterate for some 20 to 50 years, any marked change won't happen overnight. We have a long way to go and much more activity to effectively tackle climate change issues like air quality, traffic emissions and achieve zero-waste targets in the city. Planting more trees, shrubs and greenery are therefore steps in the right direction towards reducing greenhouse gases, improving carbon storage and preventing escalation of both local and global temperatures. We've recently seen appalling examples of deforestation and burning, which are currently contributing to some 17% of global warming and the release of further carbon. Clearing tropical rainforests for cash crops and grazing land has consequences for the whole planet, and we've also seen the effects of flooding in places like Bangladesh and Indonesia. Very recently, I was at a charity lunch where there was a small envelope by each place, and for a donation of a pound, the Tree Sisters will plant three trees. And as a result of that single lunch, 5,000 trees have been, sorry, 3,000 trees have been planted by a women's group, and that was terrific. Now, last year the government had targets to plant 5,000 trees and missed them by two-thirds. Internationally, IPCC estimates that 15 billion trees are chopped down every year. In the UK, it's about 33 million acres. To meet zero-carbon targets, the UK woodland cover would need to increase from 13% to 17%, requiring the planting of 30,000 hectares of trees every year for the next three decades. This is why my suggestion of planting one for every citizen in the city seems like a good target to me. Interesting, since an item about this appeared in the Journal recently, I've had lots of messages from residents, emails, phone calls from people who've come up to me in Sainsbury's and left messages saying, good on you, well done, and how they welcome this idea of planting more trees, and asking, how can they get involved and how can they plant a tree or two? So we must have serious conversations with people like Urban Green and the Freeman and our educational institutes about cooperating with more plans. In addition to the measures suggested in the motion, in which all wards can participate alongside businesses, partner agencies, et cetera, this can enable sponsorship for more planting. I'd like to suggest we actively participate in National Tree Week this year. Recently, this initiative enabled Turkey in a mass planting of 11 million saplings, and most of those were for fruit, nuts and olives. In India, they planted 220 million, and in Ethiopia, they also planted 220 million. And as someone who's worked there, I can attest, they actually need a lot more trees. I'm not sure if Newcastle participated in National Tree Week last year, but we surely could devise schemes to enable lots of residents, schools, et cetera, to do it in 2020. And it also is important we take specialist advice on what to plant where, as many of our urban gardens may not be the best place for large trees, but some of the city parks will. And I'd like to move on quickly and say, many of us have also got odd scraps of land in our wards where trees would be helpful. It's also important we work cooperatively with other local authorities, because I can have a vision where we could plant rows of trees down Coast Road or up the A1 and channel all the emissions onto other authorities, but I don't think that might be very popular. So the pressure to plant more trees grows every day, both from our international commitments on Sustainable Development Goals, as well as the pressure from philanthropic organisations. And we must be sure that we have sufficient resources to achieve planned maintenance and management for our current and future tree populations. And it's important that any programme for managing our tree population forms an inherent part of climate change, which is why I suggested aligning it with the climate change strategy. Thank you for listening, and I trust that you will agree with the sentiments of this motion and vote to support it. Thank you.
Counselor Folker.
I noticed the amendments to this motion. Originally, the proposal was to plant 290,000 trees. The change to the motion now states that there is to be a tree planted for everybody born in the city in any given year. Using the council's website, that suggests that peak year, which was 08/09, doesn't have any more up-to-date information on it than that. That's 3,429 trees. That seems like quite a large departure from the stated 2 billion trees that the Labour manifesto at the last election supported. But... I was in there!
Carry on, Counselor Folker.
Achieving these goals is, or as the motion, the goals as set out in the original motion is by all means a tall order. It's something that's going to be incredibly difficult to do, and to pretend otherwise would be folly and foolish. It is going to require a considerable effort, and it will affect existing plans and will need to be taken into account. However, those factors are not sufficient to justify to the people of this city and the people of the wider world why we would attempt to shy away from doing what actually has to be done. We are living in times of unprecedented global crisis. Our insatiable desire for energy and higher standards of living that come with it are not going to be abated any time soon. The consequences of this are best exemplified at the moment by the current situation in South Eastern Australia. As it currently stands, we are going to exceed the global target of limiting climate change to a one-and-a-half degree rise in global temperatures. Indeed, the structure of investments around the world, according to Mark Carney, currently suggests that we're actually going to hit a three-degree rise in global temperatures. To put that into context, at four degrees, it becomes completely and utterly unmanageable. We would not be able to control the greenhouse effect on our planet, and it would continue to heat and heat and heat. I know the desire to avert crisis, the crisis that's unfolding, is in the hearts of both the people on this side of the chamber and on that side of the chamber. And unfortunately, we live in a world where the high ideals that are best represented in this city are not actually represented around the globe. However, what we can do is we can do our bit. We can make a stand for what is right. This council has the ability to influence decisions taken across the city like no other body can. Therefore, I'd like to propose three ways in which we could make headway towards achieving this. Some of them are controversial. The first is to make it a condition of any future planning applications in the city that for every hundred houses built, you go and plant several thousand trees. That's the only way in which you are going to get a significant number of trees planted by developers. The second would be to use the gravitas of this council as a democratic body of the city to approach the freemen of the city and ask them to plant trees on the town more. Because you have a thousand acres there, and if you can persuade the freemen of the city to do that, and I know that that's a tall order, then you could make significant headway. To put that into context, you would only need 25% of the more in order to plant 100,000 trees. And the final one is a fairly simple one, which would be that there is a desire from the people of the world now to make a significant impact on climate change. What you can do is you could publish on your website areas of land where you are happy for people to plant trees, and you can organise schemes in which they can get trees and plant them for themselves. By doing things like that, you will be able to make some headway with this. Ultimately, this motion and the courses of action within it are only a drop in the ocean when considered in the context of solving the global problem that exists. And even if at the end of 10 years, we've only planted 150,000 trees, that's still a really good effort. But to do nothing would be absolutely abhorrent. Therefore, I beg you to wholeheartedly back the original motion. Thank you.
And I call on Counselor Kemp to move an amendment, and I understand it to be seconded by Counselor Penny Evans.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to state that I will be addressing the motion and the amendment rather than entering to a global socio-economic discussion, which has been addressed tonight, because I don't think this is actually the purpose of the motion nor the amendment. I would like to thank Counselor Huddart for bringing her motion to the City Council, first for highlighting an important, in fact crucial, issue, which is a significant contributor to our climate change emergency, but also for her acknowledgement and unwitting endorsement of the huge steps we've made on this issue through our Tree Strategy. This amendment comes largely to highlight the fact that perhaps the opposition haven't actually read the strategy they welcome in their motion and call for actions that are already in place and underway. So council should note that rather than look to work with outside organisations like the Woodlands Trust, the Tree Strategy was worked up in consultation with the Woodlands Trust. Indeed, our strategy was built around the tree charter that was initiated by the trust. We find these relationships invaluable, and we will always work constructively with partners and external experts. We, of course, endorse the benefits of trees to our city. As outlined in the motion and amendment, these are incredibly important to our future cleaner, greener city. The opposition aims to, and I emphasise, aims to plant a tree for every resident by 2030. Whilst acknowledging the ambition, we wish to be realistic in what we promise, and this is informed by a peer review we undertook. So I suggest that to plant a new whip for every newborn in the city is our commitment, and of course, if economics allow, we do more. Based on the 2019 figures, there were 6,382 new babies registered in Newcastle. The whips would ideally need to be planted in the same location, which created a new piece of woodland, as this helps to ensure the success of the trees and reduce maintenance costs. So whilst acknowledging the desire to willy-nilly plant randomly across the city as suggested by people in the opposition, we want to be structured and managed and actually maintain sustainable growth. And let us not forget, we remain in austerity, thanks to a government initially propped up by the opposition. Yes, I am going to reference it. The opposition seem to still not only believe in the magic money tree, but wish to plant some 290,000 more. Now, that really is magic, a magic money tree forest. Our Tree Strategy details the iTree study, which will provide a robust evidence base of the estate we have and the variations we should look to. This was all presented when I brought the Tree Strategy report forward. The motion calls for council to start initiatives that are already happening. The Tree Strategy clearly details the work with schools, neighbourhoods, voluntary groups and other partners and landowners across the city. Counselor Huddart calls for a rollout plan. This is already in place. This council is currently developing a database based upon GIS of all potential planting sites across the city, ignoring the current status of the land, so we have a clear picture of all opportunities for planting. And this can be used by the city, council, developers and other groups potentially seeking funding for tree planting. We are working with dealing with the ash-dyeback crisis and therefore addressing another element of the tree crisis, which wasn't picked up by the opposition. As regards scrutiny of process and development and delivery of the strategy, I've already committed to the production of an annual report, and this will of course be public documents who will be readily available to the City Council, Climate Change Committee and overview and scrutiny. Lord Mayor, I trust that this amendment shows we have much to be proud of in the achievements made to date, but also that we are no means complacent and are committed to pressing further on this important matter, in part as part of our climate change emergency activity, but also as a custodian of the future of this city, ensuring that we are providing a clean, green and diverse city for future residents. I urge council to reject the motion and accept the amendment.
Counselor Penny Evans.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm seconding this amendment by Counselor Kemp. I think it should really be seen as a friendly amendment, because it's clear that we all agree that we should be planting more trees and protecting those that are already across our city. Where and when we plant trees in our city, though, needs to be part of an overall strategy and comes with a cost for land and trees. Trees play an incredibly credible role in combating climate change by removing planet-wrecking emissions from the air around us. Trees and woods can help us improve the quality of our air, cool our warming planet, reduce the risk of flooding, as well as function as an excellent store for carbon. They can help reduce harmful pollutants which are deposited in the atmosphere by industry and transport. Urban trees can reduce heat and air conditioning costs of buildings, in turn saving annual energy consumption. Trees reduce surface water runoffs which can overload drainage systems that can lead to flash floods. One of the key ways in which carbon can be locked up is by trees and forests, which store up to 25% of the world's carbon. UK forests and woodlands act as a UK forests and woodlands act as a carbon sink and remove 10 million tonnes of carbon from the atmosphere every year. And despite their importance, yes, there is just 13% of the UK's total land area has tree cover. The current canopy cover across this city is not consistent. And if we look at the iTree survey, we can see it would be more beneficial to plant trees in certain wards and others. So therefore, I do believe there needs to be more of a strategy when it comes to tree planting. It's important, though, that we explore the ways we increase our biodiversity and look at all options in relation to tree planting and hedging. Trees and green spaces can create healthier and happier communities, tackle climate change, reconnect us with the natural world, and provide essential habitats for wildlife, trees, and woods, and ensure our urban areas are economically, socially, and environmentally more sustainable and resilient. One solution could be the development of community orchards. These can transform lives, build resilient communities, improve our wellbeing, and help nature thrive. The positive benefits for communities with a more strategic approach yield much more greater benefits to our residents. It's ideas like these that we can explore rather than planting a tree for every resident. This would commit us to reviving the UK's rich history of urban orchards. That would also mean a reconnect people to their food sources. I've spoken to many residents about planting trees, and there's excellent ideas and initiatives across the city. But I'm sure there'll be lots more ideas and suggestions that come forward in relation to trees and biodiversity in the feedback from the consultation that I mentioned that was open earlier. So I think it would be really great to wait and find out what people, residents, have to say on this issue, too. It's important to note that while planting trees is great, we also need to do much more to tackle our carbon emissions across the city, supporting residents and businesses and organisations to make positive changes in their behaviour and reduce their carbon footprint. The council has an important role to play, but it's a role that facilitates the citywide change. Our emissions are roughly split between homes, workplaces, and transport, which is why we continue to bid for funding for public transport and improvements in public transport and cycling. And we've already installed over 1,000 solar panels in our homes, helping to reduce electricity bills and carbon emissions. We also need to look at what we can do on a personal level, such as walking, cycling, getting involved in days like meat-free Mondays or Veganary... Sorry, Veganary. As meat and dairy products are responsible for 14% of the global climate change emissions. It's great that it's become easier to make a choice to go meat-free, and outlets such as Greg's make a choice, an alternative such as vegan sausage rolls or the new vegan state bake with other outlets following suit. So although we can plant trees, we also must do other things to tackle climate change on a personal level, such as refuse, reduce, reuse, repurpose, and recycle. Thank you.
Councillor Ashby?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We need very large numbers of trees to be planted to absorb carbon dioxide and air pollutants. Although Parklands has the highest level of coverage in Newcastle, we're still behind entire countries like Germany. The city faces a future which might have as many as 30,000 tree losses to ash dieback. Yes, councillor Kemp, I did look it up. Newcastle has an unenviable reputation as a tree fella anyway. We need a new reputation as a tree planter. We can and are doing it in a small way as a city and in conjunction with others. I'd like to quote a few examples that go a long way and show that if the council wants to do it, it can. A couple of dozen trees had to be removed to install cycle lanes on the Great North Road. Mostly, they were neither fine specimens nor particularly mature, but local people were outraged. We councillors worked with them and with the project managers on numbers and types of replacements. I'm delighted to be able to tell you that the last two of 44 substantial saplings were planted today. In years to come, they will grow into a beautiful avenue of varied species over a distance of a quarter of a mile along one of the major points of entry into Newcastle. Thank you to YHN, who listened to our representations over a number of years and have planted more than a dozen trees on the Granger Estate. The Gothos Sports Association decided they'd plant some whips alongside Broadway West. We've been encouraging them, and as a result, they applied for a small ward grant so they could plant some more saplings. We make every penny of our tiny ward budget work for the good of the people in the city. As a result of these small acres, pardon the pun, we have a resident talking to officers about planting a tree in her street in memory of her late husband, which she's crowdfunded. Yesterday, a resident asked for a tree close to his house. He's willing to water it and even make a small contribution to the cost. 2020 is the 75th anniversary of the end of the Second World War. We're talking to the North Gothos Parish Council about tree planting to mark that event. The National Arboretum is one way we, as a country, remember those who died in combat for us. This is a community in action, and we're very proud to represent it and encourage the Greening Parklands campaign for planting trees and bulbs. Lord Mayor, more trees, with all their benefits, are our gift to the future. The message they send to our great-grandchildren is: we knew, we cared, we acted. I support the motion wholeheartedly.
Councillor Avery, followed by councillor Kane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. At risk of returning to themes that I've explored many times before, I think there is really a risk in pledging things that we know we are not realistically going to be able to deliver without a very significant change in the funding available to us from government. It is not realistic to... And at this stage, it would be 290,000 trees. By 2030, the population will have significantly increased, and we're talking almost certainly mildly in excess of 300,000 trees. 30,000 a year. It is not realistic, and you couldn't just plant 100,000 in a year. It's really very difficult for us to be able to get that level of planting that quickly. So we would need really significant investment of resources now to reach 300,000 over 10 years. We do not have those resources. I assume that members opposite are not proposing significant cuts to other areas of the budget in order to pay for that tree planting. If they are, they should have said so and that they can tell us. But I assume that they would not propose that we cut from services for the vulnerable in order to plant trees. And given that we do not have really anything else to cut, there are not gaps in the budget which could realistically be identified to plant, for the council to plant, 100,000, 300,000 trees. Therefore, I feel we should stick with a modest and achievable aim. 6,000 trees a year would be a significant impact, getting to about 60,000 trees over 10 years. That would make a significant difference, would be us stepping up and playing our role. Draw councillor Fulcher's attention back to the mention he made of Labour's manifesto. That was one of many excellent pledges in that manifesto, and that was paid for, with the national government paying for the planting of the large number of trees. If Boris Johnson came to us tomorrow and offered to pay for 300,000 trees, we would all on this side of the House accept that and say, yes, let's plant 300,000 trees. In the absence of funding pledges from central government or any realistic chance that they might appear, it is not reasonable to say we're going to do something that we know we're not going to be able to do. And indeed, members opposite love pointing out and we have been unable to meet pledges that we previously made, even if we've tried as hard as we possibly could have done. Therefore, I do not think, as I've said, that we should adopt an unrealistic strategy. I would like to say something positive, which is that first, that the third thing that councillor Fulcher laid out of the three things to do, as councillor Kemp made clear, we are already doing. The first on planning law, I'm reasonably sure, I'm not an expert, I'm reasonably sure, would be illegal, and we would not be able to do that. But the second thing is actually a very good idea. That is, a renewed effort of going to the freemen and asking them to increase the amount of tree coverage on the moor. And it would not even necessarily require them converting whole sections of the moor into forest. There is already an existing tree line going around the moor. If you were to go from that being one or two trees wide to three or four trees wide, you would double or potentially even more, increase the proportion of trees on the moor, would not affect significantly the existing use of the moor for grazing, for recreation activities. Those are the sorts of things which I think, cross-party, we could work towards, we could realistically do, which do not require significant spending commitments from this side of the council. And as councillor Kemp makes clear in the amendment, those are the sorts of things we're doing already. But if members opposite would like to join us in a lobbying effort, that is certainly something I think we could all welcome, that there are real steps that we could take that are not going to damage the financial wellbeing of the council. Therefore, I strongly support the amendment, and I urge you to do so as well.
Councillor Kane?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm really passionate about trees. It was witnessing firsthand the devastation of Arctic forest in the far north of Russia in 1997 that changed me from an armchair environmentalist into somebody who genuinely wanted to make change happen. And when I came back from Russia, was when I moved to the North East, and I joined the local British Trust for Conservation Volunteers, and ended up both volunteering and then leading voluntary groups, helping to plant what was then the proposal for a Great North Forest. I kept a tally of my personal tree planting, it was about 400 trees. But my real, really strong memories of that was taking groups of deprived kids, kids who were in trouble with the law. You know, some of these kids had had a really tough upbringing, and getting them to plant trees in some very deprived parts of Sunderland and County Durham in particular, and seeing the pride they took in it. There was almost fights breaking out if somebody broke somebody else's whip and things like that, because they were so passionate about these trees. And what I'm getting at is that this isn't only a... Something that the council can do. And councillor Avery, as in his previous speech was setting up a number of straw men to knock down. Nobody's saying the council has to fund 290,000 trees. It's saying the council's ambition should have 290,000 trees planted across the city. We have partners coming in to the Climate Convention, the Net Zero Task Force. Net zero means a combination of reducing emissions and then taking other means, particularly tree planting, to account for the remainder. With the best will in the world, the council and all its partners will not hit absolute zero by 2030. We will need to have these trees planted. So we need to up our game, and we need to encourage partners through whatever mechanism works out, and this is why we're requiring some innovation, some open-minded thinking rather than some of the closed-minded thinking. And I endorse councillor Penny Evans, rather than the other speakers who seem to want to close things down. Yes, let's have a community woodland, but community orchards. And those of us who went down to Waltham Forest to see the cycle scheme, some very exciting, very small community orchards put in ordinary residential streets that were really, really exciting. And we've got to think about street trees as well, particularly in deprived areas, because they clean the air of pollutants. We were talking about air quality later. They deaden sound, they make people mentally and physically healthier. You know, there's been lots of evidence that show that patients in hospitals with a view of woodland recover more quickly than those who have a more built-up view. So really what I'm trying to get at is don't close your minds down on these proposals. We need to set ambitious targets to open up our minds to make it happen. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I won't cover the funding side of this tonight because my colleague has covered that quite eloquently in his speech. What I did want to put right was some of the inaccuracies which has been put across tonight. One thing that the Labour group do not do is wait for a motion to come to council to take action. As commented by councillor Kemp, what we've actually seen already is working with partners in many different ways to improve the great tree canopy that we have across the city. And I just want to bring council's attention to one action that we have taken with one of the partners, which has been mentioned by a number of councillors tonight, which is the freemen of Newcastle and the stewards committee. Just at the last meeting of the town moor joint committee, it was discussed about the tree canopy and also about trees on the town moor and on the verges of the town moor, which actually could be researched very easily by looking on the latest publication of the Freeman's magazine article, which is available online. In there, it states that the freemen are looking at different ways of propagating air cones, which have been donated by a member of the stewards, by the chairman of the stewards committee. And they're willing to then grow the air cones, no pun intended, they are actually propagating the air cones in many different ways, and then planting them on the town moor and the surrounding verges. They say, I quote, "Our aim is to contribute in a positive and proactive way with the city council's tree strategy for Newcastle upon Town, which seeks to protect and care for Newcastle's trees, hedges, and woodlands, and thereby helps to improve Newcastle's environment. Our intentions is that the oak trees will remain in place for many decades to come." Lord Mayor, I thought it was just corrective, right, to bring this to the attention of council and put it on record and offer my thanks to the freemen for working with us in partnership to improve not just the environment, but also the open space that's available on our much-treasured town moor land. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I'll now call on councillor Hoddart to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks to everyone who's made contributions this evening. It was a bit disappointing to read the amendment and to hear councillor Kemp's very defensive assumptions that more is actually going on than I think is the reality. And I had hoped that the amendments would add or enhance the motion, but unfortunately, it attempts to pare it down. And obviously, people are debating whether we can reduce from something like 29,000 a year to 3,000, or is it 6,000 a year? However, however the numbers are reduced, how would this help Claire Penny Evans' projections for zero carbon by 2030? Someone with a better calculator than me will have to work that out. And it already has been mentioned that Jeremy Corbyn did talk about planting 2 billion trees every year. I'd like to see how many is planted in Islington. I do appreciate, however, that some of the main recommended actions still remain, so thanks for that. Unfortunately, the amendment failed to mention my points about the need for adequate resourcing for the management of our tree population. Nowhere in this motion did I talk about the city council funding this exercise. I know that there are grants available from various philanthropic bodies, et cetera. So I was very careful not to make any suggestions about the spending and to mention problems of tree maintenance, the costs of that. So that was the only funding was about to mention. The trees on the town moor, yes, important, because we all see them, we all go past them. They promised they'd plant more linden trees a few years ago, and I hope they have done that. I appreciate the suggestion about community orchards. I'm all in favour of this. I have seen it elsewhere. And I've also seen other places where they've done mass planting, like in Turkey. There is a place called Girison on the Black Sea, where they grow 80% of all the hazelnuts that are eaten in the world. So every time you have a jar of Nutella, it's actually come from somewhere in Turkey. And they found me quite strange when I was there, because they kept offering us nuts and bags of nuts and roasted nuts and things with nuts in. And unfortunately, I have a nut allergy. And so I'd say, thanks very much, and just put them all in a bag and not eat any of them. And I've done work, as you know, on encouraging bees. And bees actually propagate almonds, and the almond trees are mostly in California. And I'm allergic to almonds as well. But, you know, I think as long as someone else enjoys them, that's the main thing. And there was no mention about willy-nilly planting. Nobody wants this. We'd like to see something that's sensible with a whole diversion of different types of trees, of different shapes, size... of different shapes, sizes, et cetera, species. And some of us will remember some years ago when there seemed to be a fashion for coupresses. And everybody was planting coupresses all over the place. And then we ended up with lots of problems because they just crowded everything else out and got so big. And there were problems as to how to cut them down. So I do urge that the city looks for more grants for the planting of trees. Also, I did mention about participating in National Tree Week. And no one's actually come back and said, no, we're not going to do this. So I hope we will. And I do hope some of you will be sending your amendment, as well as the original, along to Henry Murison, who wanted to chop trees down in Heaton because he always said he couldn't understand why people like trees. And he said to me, why do they want to plant trees? Why do they want flowers? You know, and he tried to get people to chop them down. I hope he's changed his mind. Thank you.
Okay, the motion has been amended, so can I ask if the amendment is agreed? Okay, will you please get your devices and vote on that, please? Yeah, the amendment. Is everybody happy the vote's been recorded? Yes? No? Yes? Right. There was certainly someone in seat 77 earlier on in the meeting. And it is quite possible to vote from outside the room, but I don't believe that is going on. Yes, there was. So can I ask our IT people if they'll follow that one up and get to the bottom of what's happened there? But I can declare that the amendment has been agreed. So the agreement, the amendment becomes the substantive motion. Is the substantive motion agreed? Agreed. And thank you for the eagle eyes for spotting that and pointing it out. Don't know who it was. If we can move on to item two, which is the next motion of the White Ribbon Campaign. And I'll call on councillor Forbes to move the motion. I believe it's to be seconded by councillor Cot.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I appreciate that time is getting on this evening. It's been a long meeting. But this is a very serious issue. The starting point for this motion in this campaign is that we believe that no person should suffer domestic violence or abuse, full stop. Especially not in their own home, especially not at the hands of people who should love and care for them. But the alarming figures referred to in the motion highlight the urgent need to challenge the culture that enables domestic violence to flourish and address the social norms which influence the behaviour of perpetrators. What's more concerning is the increase in the number of residents accessing support following the Christmas period, a time of year that celebrates family and should bring people together. But we know that Christmas can put increased pressure on families, both financially and emotionally. And our services have reported a 50% increase in referrals just this last month. We should and we must address this, both in terms of supporting victims, but also in terms of ensuring that we show leadership in changing the culture and the social norms. And we have a role to play here. We, as leaders in our city, can shape the actions of our residents. If we have a genuine vision that Newcastle should be a city which is welcoming for all and where everybody can flourish and be truly themselves without fear of oppression of any sort, then we have to ensure that people are not only supported when they suffer domestic violence, but that we don't allow it to happen in the first place. Abuse and violence are a choice, and there is no excuse for them. And domestic abuse happens throughout every level of society, regardless of health or wealth or status. We know, for example, it's probably the biggest single factor behind the 17% increase in the number of looked-after children in Newcastle in the last 12 months alone. But we also know that 75% of victims who reported domestic violence to Northumbria Police are female. And that's why raising awareness with men and making sure men feel empowered to challenge and call out abusive behaviour is vital. One of the things that people sometimes say when we say that we have to tackle violence against women is that there's an automatic question, well, what about violence against men? And I'm not saying that that's not an issue, but if that's the first response to the first question, then it demeans and devalues the issue that we're trying to tackle in the first place. So it's not enough for us to consider ourselves as well-educated, nice men. We have to do more ourselves. We have to be ambassadors for change. And part of the White Ribbon Campaign is to encourage staff and members to become ambassadors and champions by pledging to never commit, excuse or remain silent about male violence against women. And as part of this motion, we're pledging to become a white ribbon accredited authority. In order to achieve this accreditation, we must set out a three-year plan that shows how we will drive forward social change and increase the knowledge and skills of all staff to address violence against women. One of the key requirements is to select at least four male white ribbon ambassadors who will drive forward this change. I believe very passionately about leading this, and I want to be the first of Newcastle City Council's ambassadors. And I would ask other male members and officers sat in the room to consider what role they can play. This is important because, for a number of reasons. Firstly, the motion refers to ambassadors and champions. Ambassadors in this context are men, champions are women. And this is specifically about men leading social change. And in this council, we have in place a domestic abuse champions network made up of staff from right across the authority. But the vast majority of those champions are female members of staff. There's a very real danger that domestic violence is seen as a woman's issue and that men don't take it seriously and let off the hook. So it would be good to encourage male champions from across this council to stand up and sign the pledge to make a difference. We will also continue to support our already long-established Violence Against Women and Girls strategic group, providing training for members and making White Ribbon Day on 25th November part of the civic calendar. This is part, hopefully, the start of a concerted and systematic approach to challenging the cultural and social norms that tolerate domestic violence. It is never acceptable. And I hope that not only can we work to ensure that everybody in this organisation understands the leadership role that we can play, but that we can genuinely make Newcastle the first white ribbon city in the UK so that everybody who lives here, regardless of their gender, can live without fear of discrimination, prejudice, oppression, violence. That is a vision of equality that we can all be proud of. And I hope we can support this motion tonight to take us on that journey. Thank you.
councillor Cot.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and thank you very much councillor Forbes for bringing this motion. I'm actually speaking on behalf of councillor Lower, who would have wished to be here tonight, but she's not feeling so well. And I know she, in her national role, has been doing some work around some of these issues. So I think she's very disappointed she's not able to be here. And unfortunately, I'm a poor substitute for her, but hopefully I'll be able to get the key messages across. I think councillor Forbes raised some really important issues about domestic violence in this city and across the country. And this, and his ambition for Newcastle to be the first white ribbon city in the UK is a really important one. And it's one that we in this council will be united in supporting. We see in Newcastle alone the worrying increase in violence against women. This is increasing by a phenomenal rate and it is appalling. We need to do something about that. We need to raise awareness of the issues. And also building on some of the work that's been undertaken, and councillor Forbes alluded to actually some very good practice in terms of working to address some of the issues on a multi-agency level. There's a lot of good work going on, so we should recognise that, but recognise there are always more things that could be done. I think we also ought to recognise that in many cases, violence against women is not just a one-off. It is a repeat pattern of violent behaviour. And that affects everyone. It affects everyone in the family, it affects communities, it affects young people in particular. I always remember this, I should have found some for this evening, but there's some really horrifying statistics how often young people are exposed to domestic violence, abuse, often involving women. And of course, this violence leaves women feeling vulnerable, damaged, often suffering in silence. And maybe some of this work will also help to raise awareness of some of the opportunities that there are for support. But I was very taken by councillor Forbes's perspective about men and about making sure that men know that this is not acceptable behaviour. And to get men engaged as ambassadors to deal with some of these issues, I think that is very striking. Because I think often, as was said, this is often seen as a woman's issue. And of course, it isn't a woman's issue, it's a whole issue for society, and we need to certainly bear that in mind. So work that we can do in this area will actually help, I hope, to reduce violence against women. And that will come with some positive outcomes for those women themselves and preventative work to ensure that this kind of spiral of behaviour is stemmed and we start to see reductions in violence over time. So I very much back this motion, and from this side, we will certainly be supporting it. We welcome this ambition and we'll be united around this issue. So thanks to councillor Forbes for raising it. It's a really important issue. And we look forward to supporting the work right across the council. And maybe some councillors will get directly involved in this perhaps, as well as officers. And let's see how we can work together to achieve some of that. Thank you.
councillor Jackie Robinson, followed by councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I fully support this motion. I am a survivor of domestic violence. I got out of it a long time ago. I was one of the lucky ones. And what I would like to say... A lot of men do not realise that they are abusers or they are violent because of the way they have grown up in their families. So there's the support from there, which I know that we will, people will give them. They have seen how their fathers, their grandfathers have slapped their parents, their mothers because of certain things. I would say that violence against anybody is never acceptable in any form, and it is abhorrent to me. So please support this motion. Thank you.
councillor Ferguson, to be followed by councillor Penny Evans.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And first of all, my thanks to councillor Robinson for sharing that with us. I, as a student, had the opportunity, I suppose, to be involved in working on some research on this subject. And the research ended up being published with a long and boring name in an incredibly dry academic journal that somewhat takes away from the emotional heft of the subject at hand. But the simple finding of the research was that there are social factors that tolerate and facilitate violence against women from men and domestic violence in general. And there are social factors that prevent it and make it clear that it is simply unacceptable. And it is undeniably the case that encountering domestic violence, we all have to suppress those social factors that tolerate and facilitate it and absolutely encourage to flourish and spread all of those attitudes and factors that make it clear that domestic violence is something that should not be tolerated in a civil society. So I wholeheartedly support this motion. And I am more than happy to say this evening that if you're looking for volunteers to be an ambassador for this particular movement, I would be glad to be one. Thank you.
Thank you for that. councillor Penny Evans, followed by councillor Avery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't know if she's still here, Jackie. I just found that quite emotional. I want to thank Jackie for sharing her experience and her courage to disclose that with council this evening. Lord Mayor, I back this motion as Chair of Safe Newcastle. I think it's incredibly important that we continue to tackle violence against women and girls. We know that there are some shocking statistics that we should shame us all in relation to the number of incidents. I mean, in the UK alone, there were 2 million victims of domestic abuse last year, 1.3 million were women, the equivalent to the combined populations of Newcastle, Liverpool and Manchester. And in Newcastle last year, there were 7,759 recorded incidents of domestic abuse. And although people have mentioned the increases tonight as well, we also must be quite, again, aware of the bravery of those women and people who are victims who have come forward and sought help, because a lot of the time it goes unreported as well. Many of the incidents that have been reported are often repeat incidents indicative of ongoing, often escalating abuse. And behind those figures are the lives of real women. And I say women because the vast majority of victims of domestic abuse are women, although we do recognise that men and boys are affected by domestic abuse as both victims and witnesses. I'd like to highlight the importance, though, of raising this issue. And I'd like to just talk a little bit more about coercive control that I mentioned earlier. Because raising the awareness of key types of abuse is really important. I recently attended a showcase of the open class Rattlesnake film that I mentioned earlier, actually in this very chamber, along with about 100 other council staff. And it was shown here in the chamber as part of the UN 16 Days of Activism that started on White Ribbon Day of the 25th of November and ended on the 10th of December. I recommend again to all councillors that they watch that film because it helps us understand how behaviours can escalate and what actually coercive control is. Because coercive control existence in a relationship can be extremely difficult to prove. And even many victims and children growing up in families affected by this type of domestic abuse have difficulty recognising the presence of it in their homes and in their relationships. So it's important that we all develop an understanding of the extent and nature of coercive control, that so we can support victims to recognise the intent and course of conduct of perpetrators. of perpetrators, and so we're able to offer safe interventions and support. It's equally important that we educate ourselves about this behaviour, because coercive control is highly manipulative behaviour on the part of the perpetrator, and that scale and manipulation can be practised in all kinds of other people, including professionals. So we need to be aware and alert at perpetrators' attempts to control professionals. We need to, I mean, everybody in our community to develop an understanding of coercive controls, that we are alert to the signs and red flags within relationships and recognise the risks that people are living with. For victims, there's not only the trauma of experiencing this behaviour, there's also the massive trauma to understand, to be believed, to be acknowledged, while the perpetrators can very plausibly and usually convincingly deny that it's ever happened. The more we know, the better equipped we are to support victims within our community and bring perpetrators to justice. I support this motion.
Councillor Avery, followed by councillor Shumal Raman.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. White Ribbon Day next year will fall six days after International Men's Day. International Men's Day is unfortunately a day that is mostly only ever mentioned because on International Women's Day, men ask, when's International Men's Day? And very little proactive thought is given by a lot of the people, or us. I say people, I mean men, overwhelmingly men, who complain about their exclusion on Women's Day, about what they can do as men to improve the world, not just for men, but for women and for other people as well. And it unfortunately is the case that the enormous majority of perpetrators' domestic violence and indeed of murders which follow from domestic violence are men. And therefore, it is men who need to take action on this issue. I know from my own experience as a ward councillor that women who've been victims, women and girls who've been victims of domestic violence frequently do not feel comfortable talking to a male councillor about that and prefer to go to a female colleague. The reason they do that is frequently because I resemble their abuser or that they do not believe that I will take their issue seriously, because that has been their experience with men. That has been their experience, an experience of violence, an experience of denial, an experience of belittling and minimisation. And these are the characteristics that come from something that some of you may have heard about called toxic masculinity. That is, an idea that men are manly or masculine by being violent, that men are manly or masculine by denying their emotions, that men are manly or masculine not by listening, but by talking, by telling people and not accepting that they might be wrong. All these things are negative, all these things are drivers, that are the social causes that lie behind domestic abuse. When people are not encouraged to understand their emotions, are not encouraged to engage in dialogue, and indeed are penalised for doing so, when men are belittled for having emotions, then those emotions are shut down and they instead react with violence. And I completely agree with councillor Forbes, there is no excuse for violence. Violence is always a choice. But nonetheless, we have to tackle the crisis in masculinity that leads to the problems we have today. And that involves men standing, speaking up and saying, this is not what being a man is about. This is not what I consider to be manly. This is not what I consider to be masculine. That a man is not less of a man because he cries, a man is not less of a man because he listens, a man is not less of a man because he experiences emotions. But a man is less of a man if he uses violence to hurt others. A man is less of a man if he denies that violence or belittles it. A man is less of a man and less of a human being if he tolerates, condones or supports that violence. That's why this campaign is critically important and why I'm happy to join councillor Forbes and councillor Ferguson in putting myself forward to be an ambassador. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Ramon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll keep my confirmation brief, I know time's ticking along, and colleagues on both sides there, I'll have been very eloquent around this, particularly my friend councillor Avery. I totally agree with what Oscar's saying there. As a healthcare professional, I see the brutal end of this quite often on a daily basis. Sadly, I experienced it yesterday with a horrific case of female genital mutilation. It is quite emotive. Domestic violence needs to be tackled. It's abhorrent. It's a stain on our society. And I, like my colleague here, will stand up and be ambassador for the White Ribbon Campaign. Thank you very much.
I call on councillor Forbes to reply.
Can I thank everybody who's participated in a very important discussion and debate tonight? And I know Anita was very keen to be involved in seconding it, because I know Anita is involved in a number of national issues broadly related with FGM and domestic violence. But it kind of feels appropriate that it's Nick and Nick doing it. We are council twins. People don't know what that means. It means we were first elected on the same day together, although he got a bigger majority, so he's higher above me in the rankings of seniority somehow. That's the only thing we have in common. We're completely different otherwise. Just reflecting on the discussion we've just had, I do think this council is at its very best when members bring their real-life experiences into the chamber and share them with bravery and courage. And Jackie, I know how much that took for you to do. I know that it's something that has shaped your life, and I just want to say, as other members have done, huge thank you for your courage and bravery in speaking up tonight. Operation Sanctuary, at its heart, put belief of victims and celebrated their bravery. And we can do that, and we've done that with Jackie. But our vision should be to ensure that nobody is a victim in the first place. It's not enough simply to pick up the broken pieces of shattered lives. We have to ensure that people aren't broken in the first place. And that means changing our world. And not some world that is somebody else's problem, not some world that is the responsibility of other people to deal with. The worlds that we all live in, our homes, our families, our communities, our workplaces, our friendship circles, how easy is it to turn a blind eye? How easy is it to let a remark go unchallenged? How easy is it to say, oh, actually, that isn't my problem, that's their relationship issue, it's nothing to do with me? Of course, it's so very difficult to get involved with those issues. That's why we need support and training to support us to do it. But that's what this campaign is about. It's about empowering us to make the difference, person by person, house by house, street by street, community by community, building up to a city where we put true equality at the heart of what we're trying to achieve and give us all the confidence to challenge but to change our world for the better. So thank you, colleagues, for your support, and I really hope that this can bring us together as a city to make a real difference for future generations.
Does the council agree the motion? Yes, thank you. I'm going to move on to item 13, we just got it in in time. The guillotine will fall during this motion on school no idling zones. Not by my watch, it hasn't. Right, okay, I'm informed on my left that the guillotine has fallen. So I'll deal with the business according to standing order 19. So can I ask councillor Taylor if she wants this motion to be taken or left till next time? Right. And similarly, item 14, which is the metro industrial dispute, councillor Stone. Right. You want to take the vote? Right, so councillor Stone's motion is before us. Is it seconded? Yes. Councillor Ashby? There is an amendment. Councillor McCarthy, do you want to move this amendment? And seconded by anybody? Councillor Avery at the back there. So we take the vote on the amendment. Is the amendment agreed? I hear the amendment's agreed. No. Right. Vote, please. Right. Get your technical issues resolved. Keep an eye on seat 77. Is everybody happy that their votes recup... No, not councillor Kemp. Seat 70. Great. Okay, so the amendment's carried and becomes the substantive motion. Is the substantive motion agreed? Agreed. Thank you. Holocaust Memorial Day, councillor McCarthy, do you wish this to be voted on or taken next time? Please. So there is no amendment to this motion proposed, so it... Is this seconded? Councillor Avery? And is the motion agreed? Agreed. Thank you. And the final item is the motion on austerity. Councillor Forbes, do you... Sorry? I wish it to be deferred till next month. Okay, that closes the meeting. The next meeting will be on the 5th of February, so thank you for your forbearance this evening.